Imam Mikail?
Yes, sir.
You can start whenever you.
Well, I've got it, Imam Kareem. Thank you.
Oh, I'm sorry. You know, I thought you had to do the introduction first. I was waiting.
Thank you. Assalamualaikum, dear believers and those in the studio and those who are joining us on Zoom. Welcome to our Saturday morning lineup. First session is our Saturday morning Tauline. Join us every Saturday morning at 7:00 AM Eastern Time for our study session, our Saturday morning Tauline. And our guest host is Imam Mikail Sahir from Indianapolis, Indiana. And we are studying from the book, Commentary on Selected Verses of the Holy Quran Documented from the Teachings of Imam Waf di Muhammad. So we'll start off by sharing the stance of CWSC and AM360.
The views expressed by the host, guests are their own and not necessarily the position of AM360 or the parent corporation, the Community Wide Shore Conference, CWSC Incorporated. AM360 content is intended as a community service and is not designed to provide specific personal, medical, financial, or legal counsel or other professional advice, and no liability shall extend to the host or hostesses of AM360 or CWSC. We encourage you to seek an advisor for your specific circumstance.
This is the book that we are studying from that is being presented by Imam Mikail Sahir, Commentary on Selected Verses of the Holy Quran. And it is compiled from the teachings of Imam Waf di Muhammad. So again, good morning to you. Assalamualaikum and good morning to you, Imam Mikail. And the mic is yours.
Alaykum. Thank you very much. It's indeed a pleasure and honor to be here, once again with the believers. Anytime with the believers is a blessing, and we should cherish those moments together. I did just want to make a fast comment. Yes, you know, I was not here last Saturday. Locally, we had our banquet, the parent appreciation banquet. And it was a fantastic gathering. We had a nice contingent that came from St. Louis, Missouri with Imam Jahad Bookman and his family. And I think they had all together about 12, 13 people that came. And he also was to continue for Ayjuma as well. And our main speaker was Sister Khadijah Siddiq Muhammad, the wife of Imam Waf di Muhammad for the banquet. So just wanted you all to know, we had a very good time. Alhamdulillah. So we can go ahead and begin. So I think we're going to begin on page 96. Am I correct?
Yes, sir. That's what I have.
Right. I know if Imam Kareem, if he had a different page or not, he's pretty good at keeping up with this.
Yes, we did stop on page 96. That's a good place to start. It's a...
Okay.
The language makes people are either Khalifa. I'm making the Khalifa in the earth.
Well, let me go to the top of the page.
Alhamdulillah.
Yeah. The top of the page says, "America, the Beautiful." And Imam Homos says, "There are some of you around this blessed country, the United States, that are blessed and cursed with bad leaders. Blessed because of good leaders making contributions to the building of a special people called Americans. And cursed because of bad leaders in America. The beautiful and America, the ugly, all mixed in together. Now, I am for America the Beautiful, and I hope that I am a factor in preserving and promoting America the Beautiful." Alhamdulillah. Yeah, that's very good. Imam says, "The building of a special people called Americans." And I think we really need to ponder that and to appreciate that. And so we can ourselves become beautiful contributions to our American society. And then Imam, he's balanced. He recognizes that there is an America the ugly. I think we mentioned this last time. Yeah, I recall now. Because I had asked about who we remember the book. There's the light shining from the east even into the west. Because there's a whole chapter in their book titled, "America the Beautiful and America the Beast." So we have to recognize where we're at for the benefits we can have in this society, but also be very conscious of the threats that are in this American society, the ugly. Because Shaytaan has just as many rights, sometimes like he has more rights in America than the good people. And Shaytaan will take you to court and sue you if she tried to stop him from promoting his filth. But at the same time, this America is beautiful. And our foreparents paid a serious price. Slavery, Jim Crow, we did not get pure back to layers to see how ugly, I mean ugly, those systems were. And the ramifications or the continual effects from those the ugly institutions. And that's one reason why they were so ugly. I think were actually institutions with laws written by American leaders to support that. But we endure that. And we are enduring that. And so a lot of people paid a serious price for us to be where we are in America, the beautiful. Anybody have any thoughts on that? Any comments on that? Okay.
Martha Nyla. Assalamualaikum.
Alaykum.
Ah, yes. And greetings of peace to everyone. I'm calling from St. Petersburg, Florida. I believe, as we do with our organizational selves, we find that whenever we have laws and we write bylaws, and in writing those bylaws, that's because they are amendable. And when we, as a country, with institutions that operate as organizations organized for a purpose, we failed, and I can understand, I can understand why, we failed to dissect and rewrite the bylaws, the governing processes, even though it was at a greater hand legislatively done. And then, along with that, incorporated a law for incorporating laws. Can you see what I'm saying? Like, there, and get that law before it is amended or even scrapped, it has to go through a higher legislative process to not just amend, but even to discuss amending it or abolishing it. So that process in and of itself, two-thirds having to, of the top legislators having to reconcile everything. We have allowed an institution of that, that institutional process, to corrupt and keep the corruption of, be inhumane. Let's put it, I want to use those words, to be in those inhumane laws to remain because we're submitting to the process by not even changing the process by which the laws are done.
Yes, ma'am. Thank you. And very well said, because we have work to do. And in particular, those of us who are Muslims, and I say even more particular, for those of us who are coming to this understanding of Allah's law, we have a very serious job to do. That's why me and my brother Mark say, "How are you doing?" I say, "I'm still doing it. We got work to do." Because America the Beautiful, it is our inheritance. We have paid blood, I mean physical blood, for it to be our inheritance. So we have to fight for it. And the institutions, the system, and all of this was institutions gave birth to other institutions to support the ugly. And there's some as well for the good. But we have to fight that. Brother Mark, alaykum. You're on mute. Brother Mark, you're on mute. Brother Mark, you're on mute. Well, maybe we come back to him. He has his hand up.
Yes, there we are. Assalamualaikum.
Alaykum.
Yeah. Alhamdulillah. Yes, this is a good starting point. The ugly and the beauty. I think that Imam Muhammad has sent us a very, very thoughtful message here. The beautiful represents those ideals and principles. You know, Sister Martha was speaking about the law. But what law can be greater and higher than the law that Allah gives us in the Quran, oftentimes referred to as Sharia law? This was implemented in terms of the Constitution of the United States of America. These are the ideals. These are the principles for all human beings, you see. They weren't practiced at the time that they were implemented, but this is the beauty of America. When the Constitution has words that reflects what God's law is, but to be acknowledged and to be implemented, that's where the issue actually is. And I hope that it is, that we began to see that. This is the beauty of America. We can go all around the world and we not see what has been implemented in the United States of America. And many that have traveled and experienced the political climate and Constitution and how they rule, was we had Brother Kareem Hock on yesterday as Abba la Sisah Khadijah Siddiq Muhammad, and talking about the various types of government. You don't get a better government in terms of that, which actually have the law that's governing everybody, that puts a check and balance on everybody in the different branches that we have in America. Imam Muhammad is a visionary, is able to see the beautiful side of America. Because the ugly side, I think Imam, as you just said, sometimes it just seems to overwhelm people. And we can't see anything beautiful about America. But all you have to do is just leave America. And I did at one time, a few years ago, to work in the Bahamas. And then I was so glad to get back to America. I'll just say that. But hopefully, that little two cent really helped us to be able to see the visionary that our leader and teacher Imam Waf di Muhammad have. So we not to take those things that he's saying lightly. Look at the beautiful. That's him to promote the beautiful is indigenous Muslim African Americans. But we're not going anywhere. We're here. Assalamualaikum.
Alaykum. Yeah, and yesterday as well, a little bit further on this. Brother Mark, you want to lower your hand, please?
Oh, yes, sir.
Um, so another thing too is that we have to realize the background and the setting of this paragraph. And we remember the Imam saying, coming out, it was 1976, I think it was, I think it was 75. And he walked across the front, right there at the masjid on Sunny Island, carrying the flag. He said, "If you won't carry it, I will." And so not only did he push us to see the beauty of America, he was speaking to the community in America that was most known to be anti-American. The Nation of Islam, I don't think you could get more, you cannot get more anti-American than that. And he turned us around. So that's a powerful, powerful, powerful sign, because he could see the beauty, he could see the ugly. But he also had the skill, Imam Muhammad had the skill, words, to teach us and to take the group that was most anti-American and make us some of the best Americans. Because now we have insight. And two, it's kind of like with Moses, we have the tail of that snake. The rod turned to a snake. But when Allah taught Moses how to deal with that snake, he came back to his staff. So very similar for us. Imam Muhammad taught us how to handle this situation and to see the beauty in it and not to walk away from our inheritance because we paid a very serious price. American democracy, as with most democracies, is an experiment. Them enslaving our foreparents was an experiment. But we know what we always say, man plans and Allah plans. And Allah's plan is dominates man's plans. So whatever they had in mind for us, and they still have in mind for us, those who are the ugly, we not worry about that, because Allah is always in control.
That's beautiful, brother. Ma'am, that comparison that you just made from our beginning here in America and what our perspective was in terms of how we saw America. You know, the policy, we didn't see that, but praise be to Allah that he blessed us to be able to see that through our deeds and Imam Muhammad. So thank you for bringing it up.
Well, and just one more thing, maybe to cap this part off, so we can keep moving. He mentions in here, in this paragraph, "The good leaders making contributions to the building of a special people called Americans." Now, he's not saying this here, but I think I'm going to extend upon that. I think you all will agree. Yes, made a special people called Americans, but there was another special people that came, a new people that came out of these Americans, the African American. And so one thing, as a reminder, they say 12 million Africans were kidnapped during that, those centuries of enslavement. They say 2 million probably died in the transition. So roughly 10 million Africans were taken from the continent, from their motherland. All that 10 million, you know how many made it to the continental USA? Anybody know? It was a half a million. It was like 5%. 5%. Other words, if they took 100 Africans and kidnapped them, only five made it to the continental USA. Now, think about that. So that means that 95% of the Africans were in Brazil, the islands, like Jamaica and all that. Only 5% made it to the continental USA. 500,000 out of 10 million. So and from that group of people, that 5%, we are the descendants of that. And we look at all of the major inventions made. We're talking about America the Beautiful, right? Okay? Of all the gaslight, stoplight, refrigerator, you know, go on down this, right? We've got people like Dr. King, Malcolm X, Elijah Muhammad, Sojourning Truth. It's like, wait a minute, only five, out of that 5% came about boom of human excellence and expression. So Allah is looking, so we are a special people, believers. And I'm putting some math to this, 5%. Only 5% made it, go check it out. Only 500,000 made it to what we now see as the continental USA. If in that 5%, we've got some awesome contributions. We got people around Muhammad Ali's, known around the world, out of 5%. So that's America the Beautiful and the making of a new people, a special people. Now, we got Imam Muhammad, Scholar Supreme, and religious doctrine, theology, how you want to say it, came out of that 5%. So don't underestimate what we have. I'm not, I'm not talking to the choir, but the choir got friends too. So you go talk to your friends, you know? So we've been blessed, goodness, we've been blessed. Alhamdulillah. Let's continue. Page 96. Language Makes People. That's the subtitle. Imam says, "I said a long time ago, before I was called the Imam, I was still called Chief Minister. Quote, 'Words make people,' end quote. And it means, language makes people. The language on the street, if the youngsters accept it, it makes street people. It makes youngsters of the street. And if one is fortunate to be in a congregation that recognizes the Lord, God over all things, then the scripture communicated to you may those people. The scripture communicated by those people to their congregation or to each other makes them and you makes them, okay, makes them, and you can tell when you see them, especially the believers. You do not have to be a believer in their religion. Just be a true believer, and you will recognize a believer, whether it is Christian, Jew, Buddhist, even Hindu or Sabian. Those outside of the people of the book that we identify with as Muslims, Jews, and Christians. Some think it is only Muslims, Jews, and Christians. No. When Allah says, "People of the book," he is also talking about the Sabians, and they still exist. I thought they did not exist anymore, but I found out about four or five years ago, there are still practicing believers on this planet Earth called Sabians. When you are around them and you have a chance to converse with them or share in the conversation with them, you feel a believer. And after a while, you forget the religious label identity. And you are just happy to be with another believer, and you feel good in their company. What it does is support the belief that I have been focusing on. The belief that I am focusing on is that God's word creates the people he wants on this earth." Okay. And now I see a note, this is where we stopped at last time. I hit with the door to myself. I'm just now finding it. Alhamdulillah. But this is good review. Very good review. Yes, sir, brother Mark.
Yes, sir. Oh, boy. I tell you, Imam Muhammad don't waste words, does he?
Yes, sir.
So, so very, very powerful. I remember your production on Blog Talk Radio that you always would open up, you know, words make people. That was your platform. And you would always say almost every broadcast, but it's a rhetorical question, of course, but to get those who listen in to think, but it's the best word, make the best people. And it was always the words of revelation, and in particular, the final revelation, which is Al-Qur'an. And the law tells us that in Surah 55, Al-Raqman, Al-Raqman, "I am my Quran, color, color, and sand, am I whom I be am, that the most merciful benefactor, he taught the Quran, created the human, and he taught him intelligent and clear speech."
I mean.
Yeah. So we can look at that and what the Imam is saying here in terms of words, how powerful words are, they're containers of ideas, but also spirit in those words. The words are a container of ideas, but also spirit. Every word has a spirit in it. Make the connection. So you're not to challenge God's creation until he breathes into him His wrath. And we can look at that in terms of even words that come from the secular. It also has ideas, but it has a spirit too. So with logical conclusion, whichever words most influential in the human being's life, that's what makes them who they are. So you can tell, you know, as Allah says in the Quran, to every human being behaves according to their own disposition. Question, what is disposition? Makes that disposition. So I could go on and on with that, but you see, you follow the logical conclusion that what Imam Muhammad is seeing. And maybe in just minutes of actually engaging with other people, you can see, or be perceptive enough to see what words have they been influenced most by. That's why he said that you can tell if they are words of revelation, whether you're a Christian, you're a Jew, Sabian, Muslim, or Buddhist, or what, you'll be able to see that. And I could stop there, but... And I could, I'll stop there, but Imam Muhammad don't waste, he don't waste words. I'll stop there.
Alhamdulillah, thank you, thank you, brother Mark. Lower your hand, please, Sister Manera.
Yes, and, and that's what I'm going to tell everyone and everyone who's, who's joined us. Alhamdulillah, you know, this is very timely and a more reinforcement Imam Fahim and his jumba yesterday, was teaching on the same topic. And he reminded us, um, of words making people and where do we find the best words? And the best language in the Holy Quran. And for this reason, how, how therapeutic reading the Holy Quran is. And encouraged everyone to read it daily, even if it's one page, to read it daily and, and learn the words of the Holy Quran in Arabic.
In Arabic, thank you, in Arabic. You've got to get back home. Yes. Alhamdulillah, you, you know, uh, yes, anytime you get a chance to, this is the Imam Fahim, sure, please do. Cause he's, he, he is the best brother, you know, alhamdulillah, he got something to share. Sister Martha. Sister Martha, you on mute?
Okay, my, my mic is over there now, can you hear me?
I can hear you. We can hear you, but you got like a weak signal, but, but go ahead.
Okay, I'll speak a little louder, may the help. I, I just want to weave, weave all this together, uh, as we're, we're, we've incorporated interfaith dialogue. Uh, we've incorporated neighborhood associations, uh, and I thought, thinking like this. I'm in Florida and I can talk about traveling to California. And I established a vehicle that will move the, the words to truly make the people. And, and as we're speaking about, uh, the, you know, Im- Imam Fahim, uh, with all of the mechanisms that are in place, the process of adapting to it and adopting it and, and then sharing with others. I know our interfaith groups here, uh, as we're influencing the very words that Allah swt has blessed Imam Wati Muhammad with to convey and to show us ways and means to get it uh, trans- transported or transferred. Uh, and I say that in this manner, so that, that the actualization of changing from the, the spiritual concepts, but, and, and we're, we're taking, we're making steps. So as we are doing it, I, I think we can continue and just know that words make people. So when we're discussing, we don't waste words either with, uh, you know, challenging those things that are just going to go back and forth, but really getting to the documents of it all. So I'll stop right there, thank you.
Alhamdulillah, yes, but your voice was loud enough, it was just sometime it would crackle. But I, I, I think we heard enough to capture what you were saying. Uh, what came to my mind was that this, if we know the words of scripture, then we can develop it. This is my words, a, 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 a universal language that can transcend those lines of interface. So that we can all understand each other and be very careful of the words that we use. Because as the man said here, words make people. But you don't have to get into a debate on religion. If you know the universal language, that's what, what I, I got from what you were saying, if I, if I heard you correctly.
Yes, sir.
Okay, good, yes, yeah. And then your voice is very loud, it's just sometime it, it, it crackles and it goes in and out a little bit. So, okay, alhamdulillah, I see another hand up from someone, but it says connecting to audio.
Yes, sir, that is my hand raised, praise be to Allah.
Oh, okay. Go ahead, please.
Imam Muhammad, yes, sir. Imam Muhammad did not waste, waste words. He went straight to the principles that makes the United States beautiful. He shared with us the motto of this country. The motto of this country. It is the only country that mentions the Creator at its foundation. On its currency, they refer to, in God's trust. The standard, established standards for this country are the words that precede the Bill of Rights. And those statements are lending to the, the beautiful side of America with good, with leaders that may have not been excellent, but they had enough good in them to insert this language. That we hold these truths to be self-evident, that all men are created equal and endowed by their Creator with certain inedible rights. Among these rights is the right to life, liberty and the pursuit of happiness. Praise be to Allah. That is the unity of this, of this country. What, what we are, what the good people are struggling with is to enforce, to enforce the over, the overriding standards and the overriding principle at the founding of this nation. Imam Muhammad mentioned once, Allah isn't worth anything unless it is vouchsafed, vouchsafed. So the question is, who will vouch, who will vouch for that right? Who will enforce it? Who will stand up for it? And that is the beautiful side of America. Those that, uh, that, that, uh, that promote and, uh, enforce the standards upon which this nation claims to have established itself. The belief that they recognize the Creator. And that there are certain inedible human rights that, that Almighty God have given to human beings. And no one has the right to violate those standards. This is the country that promotes that. This is the country that stands out. This is what makes it unique, that we hold these truths to be self-evident, that all people are created equal. And endowed by who? The Creator, certain inedible rights. So I thought right there, we promote, we promote that standard. That's the good America, thank you, my brother.
Alhamdulillah. Uh, if, if you can lower your hand, please, brother Imam Karim. So, uh, no. Also, uh, go online, when you get tired, and look up the US Supreme Court building, the one that was built in 1934, 1935. And right above the, right above the main steps, is that, somebody got some background noise. Right above the main steps of the US Supreme Court in Washington DC, there's like a, it's, it's called a frieze. It's pronounced frieze, but there's, it says two Es, it's, it's I E F R I E Z E, a frieze. It's made in like a triangle. And within that triangle of the frieze of the US Supreme Court, they got eight, they got, uh, 18 characters of figures from history who were effective in making laws for humanity over the thousands of years. So they got, and they are engraved. They got Moses, cause Moses had the Ten Commandments. They got Hammurah because he had the codes. But one of those 18, now I know in Islam, we don't believe in engraved pictures of Muhammad, but they put one up there and they could say it's Muhammad. And, and right above the US, you're talking about America, right? The Beautiful. The one of, that they say is Muhammad, he's standing there, in one hand, he got the Quran opened. You can see the Arabic writing. And in the other hand, he has his sword with the tip pointed down. So why am I citing this? Cause there were people who were wise enough to know that they're making the laws of this land. They borrowed from all the wise lawmakers in history. So you can get a chance, look it up, US Supreme Court, Washington DC, and put in frieze, F O I E Z E. And it was in the, the 18 figures from history, a law. So this American, uh, society that is, that we have inherited, it is, it, it is a, uh, this is their words, it is an experiment in democracy. Oh yes, uh, uh, thank you, brother Ismail. Thank you, uh, you go to the, the chat, he, he put it in there. But you can see it, you know, it's right there for us to see. The, uh, great contributions that Islam has made to this American experiment of democracy. And, and I see Imam Muhammad's voice as being not a leading voice. And I know I'm biased, but that's okay. Uh, not being a leading voice, but the leading voice in this American experiment of democracy. As to bring about America the Beautiful. So he emphasizes how words make people and how we get in conversation with people of faith. And he said, especially those who believe, that's something interesting. He said, especially those who believe. I don't know if anybody got any comment on, on that. But he says here, scripture communicated to you made those people. The scripture communicated by those people to their congregation or to each other makes them and you makes them. And you can tell them when you see them, especially the believers, alhamdulillah. And he, and Imam said, he is saying about the believers. He said, you do not have to be a believer in their religion, just be a true believer. So we have to be people of faith, alhamdulillah. Okay. We will continue on. This without him. Again, Imam, he refers us back to, we are now on page 96, at the bottom of page 96. And Imam, he references again, Surah 2, Ayah 30, where Allah says, "I am making a caliphate in the earth." In that Jahalun Firaath, kalifatah, I am making the caliphate in the earth. And another subtitle says, "Kalifa, like the shepherd, leads from behind." Not in the front, the Imam is in the front, but the caliphate leads from behind, okay? Imam says, "There are two ways to lead somebody in scripture." You go out ahead of them like Joshua did, or you lead them like a shepherd leads his sheep. I'm going to put the note here on Joshua, okay? The shepherd keeps the sheep before him. He leads from behind. But from behind, he signals the sheep which direction to stay in or which direction to go in. Now, even though he is behind you physically, he is in front of you spiritually. Interesting. And he has to see where he is directing the sheep to go before the sheep see. If he doesn't, he is not the leader. He is not the shepherd. Now sometimes one feels like, quote, "I know nothing," end quote. Well, that is a good disposition to take. That is my disposition. That is the disposition I take. Quote, "I know nothing," end quote. And that is the position the righteous, wise leaders take. They take the same position. We know nothing. You know, God, we know not. Alhamdulillah. Here is a little more understanding. When you get in heaven, they will say, quote, "This resembles what we had before," end quote. That is what my students should be saying. They should be trying to see the likeness. They should be trying to see in my teaching, support for what they used to be, to believe or what they experienced in their life as seekers. So they do know something. They know a lot. So let's, let's, let's have some reflection on what we just read here. So there are two ways of leading from be- before and behind. But the emphasis here is that we're talking about Khalifa. The Khalifa, though leading from behind, he is still really a, ahead. So he is physically behind his, his flock of sheep. Spiritually, he is ahead of them. Anybody have any comments on that? I'm just step forward.
Yes, sir, uh, Imam Muhammad, he embraced the beautiful America before we did. And you are correct, in the nation of Islam, we were anti-United States. But Imam Muhammad had vision to see the future of where we should be headed. And he used language, he used language to guide us into what we are experiencing now. He did that. We weren't, we were not in that frame of mind, but he, but him being the leader, he had foresight. And he implemented the foresight and praise be to Allah, we are so grateful that we, we do embrace the beautiful side of America after having experienced the ugliest, the ugliest side of America. I'll stop right there, my brother, thank you.
Just a comment I made. By us having, experiencing the ugly, then we can appreciate the beauty. If we hadn't experienced ugly, then, you know, we, we do how many of our youth sadly are doing, taking freedom for granted, that we in our lifetimes, me and you, we personally experienced not having the same freedom. And our foreparents had it worse than we did. So by us experiencing the ugly. Uh, and also what, as she was speaking, I was reading about the Khalifa leads from behind. You ever seen a, a mother walking down the street with her two or three small children? She, she, she always behind them. She never in front of you, you know? And I've seen teachers walking down the hallway with their children, or their students. In particular, the little toddler's in preschool kindergarten, she always walks behind them. She walking in front of them, she can't tell what they doing. Yeah. Sister, Sister Martha.
Uh, yes, right to that point, uh, Imam, uh, the-
Uh, yes, right to that point, uh, Imam, uh, the civilizational wombs of civilization, I, I place it there as a mother. And as we, as you pointed out about the Supreme Court and the representation of the freezes that where uh, knowledge was drawn from. And that would be, that's instrumental, it's a message to us to look back at that and looking back. The, the leading from behind, seeing the, the process, what occurred that was not so tasteful. Not so distinct to human humane, being humane. And then leading with a better situation, evolving to a better situation. So that's the leading from behind as well, from a mother standpoint, but mother being civilizational periods. And then leading with the word of God in front.
Yeah, if I say you correctly, Sister Martha, is that. The behind the distance would be the history that we experience.
Exactly, yes, sir.
Okay, I got you, very good observation.
Yes, sir, I'm sorry I didn't raise my hand, it gets a little complicated for me to do that.
No problem.
But uh, just, you know, as you were reading that particular part about the spirit going ahead. And I guess that, that kinda stood out. And as, as one of the challenges that uh, that we face. You know, having the spirit to, to move ahead, the spirit to go out. And to uh, and have the, the humbleness, which I need to remind myself a lot of. To uh, stay behind, stay behind and, and be patient. And as, as the spirit is going out, leading behind, and you know, and that's, I think, what we are suffering. In many, in many cases in our society, a deficit in spirit. You know, everybody be so depressed, they not, they not, they not uh. Your spirit to succeed, to be successful, doubting whether they can succeed, et cetera, et cetera. So I think that's so important.
Yes, sir.
To look at it from a perspective of uh, having the correct spirit for success.
Yeah, that's the word correct, I mean, like you said, correct, because even though four depressed, they have a spirit, but it's just not a good spirit.
Yes, yes.
Yeah, so, but then, so for us, it is trusting the, the spiritual leadership. That is trusting, for us, is trusting the Quran, he has the spirit. The life model of Muhammad the Prophet, peace be upon him, he has the spirit and we study his life. And we trust that spirit and where it's directed, cause a, a spirit is moving out. It's not, it's not settled, the soul can be settled, but the spirit is moving out. So if your soul is messed up, then you don't have a messed up spirit going out. But if you, if you have uh, a leader, a trustworthy leader, then trust that spirit. And you, you say, well, I can't see what you see, but what I had saw in the past, I trust what you see. Even though I can't see it yet, and that's how we progress, that's how people of faith have always progressed. Is that from the history of your parents or whatever. Your friend, you say, you've been a good friend to me, you've been a good parent to me. And then you're telling something down the road that I shouldn't hang with this person, I shouldn't do this, should do that, I'm going to trust your vision. Imam said that the Khalifa, they are behind you physically. But their vision is ahead of us, and that's how parents do, parents were behind us. I mean, they, their years are behind us, but their visions were ahead of us, Alhamdulillah. Any, any hands up? I don't see any hands up, okay. Alhamdulillah, but I did circle the, the name Joshua for a reason. Yes, ma'am, yes, okay. And let me just say this here really quickly, then we get to two, two, five is next. Joshua. And this is not in the Imam's talk, but we need to be, and some of us may already be aware of it. The, the name Joshua. Uh, no, he, uh, was, he was with Moses, right? He said Joshua fought the battle with Jericho and all that. And I think Joshua picked up where Moses, where Moses couldn't do, was take them over into the promised land. That's the typical version given to us about Joshua. But now in the last fifteen, twenty years or so, it's getting stronger. In the Christian church, there is a reintroduction of the name Joshua. And but they say Yahshua, Yahshua. But they say that Yahshua is, is Jesus Christ. So you may be hearing that language, maybe I already heard it. But they are introducing a new name in, in, in many church circles for Jesus. And one of the reasons why is because they know that the name, the J E S U S. It is impossible for that name to be two thousand years old. And one of the main reason why J E S U S cannot be two thousand years old. It's because the, the letter J in English is only five hundred years old right now. So, and people are criticizing, they say, how can you say his name is Jesus and there was no J? So now you find the people, and you probably already heard it, they're trying to introduce slowly into the church. The Jesus real name is not Jesus, it was Yahshua. But Yahshua translates back to the name Joshua, which means God saves. So they're trying to introduce that, just a little side note, wanted to share. A caller from two, two, five, uh, go ahead, please.
I said, I'm like, um, Sister Rashida in Louisiana.
Yes, yeah.
I, I would like, I would like to speak on the Khalifa. The, the caretaker, that's, that's what I always say, the Khalifa is the caretaker of the earth. Um, and, and the shepherd, you know, the sheeps, when, when you have sheeps. And you, you're in the background, they're in the front, they've been trained which way to go, and it's a trust there. It's a faith there you're dealing with, because when, if you're in the back, they can run all over the place. But you've taught them to go straight. And so that spirit you have, God, is leading them to go in the right direction. So the sheeps are going in the right direction because they know that you are guiding them from the back, they feel you. It's a connection there, it's, 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 it's a unity there. And so it's a knowingness there. And so the action that they take is the direction that you give them. If you give them the direction to go left, they gonna, they gonna veer left. If you give them the, and you can be from the back, and that's the same way we are with our children and humanity. Uh, with our children, when we are walking our children, if we say stop, they gonna stop. In the discipline. If you got a child that is not disciplined, they might run across the street. So these animals and, and, and your guidance, you know, you, you, you're directing them. And they, they sensing you, you, you know, they're familiar with you. They may not do that with a stranger or some strange ideal. But they do that with you because of the trust they feel and the bonding that they have with you, thank you, I said, I'm like.
Yeah, thank you, Sister Rashida, yes, uh, it says. Train them in the way that they should go. Yeah, so we have to do that, train them. And we bound you other four birds, train them, the, the training come first, the education come first. And then they can be, can be given more freedom because they have been properly trained. Also in this paragraph on page ninety-seven now, it begins on ninety-six. Imam says, uh. There's some people may say. Like, you see now, sometimes one feels like. I know nothing, people have approached Imam Muhammad like at all. He don't know nothing. And Imam Muhammad, he explains, he said, well, that is a good disposition to take, that is my disposition. And that's the disposition of all the prophets, even the Sahabas of the Prophet. He would ask them a question. They were wise enough to say what? They will say Allah and His Messenger knows best. Now, some of us, oh man, we can't wait to take off, I'm talking. Somebody asks a question, because every question asked is not meant to be answered. But some of them, some of us can't see that. Somebody asks a question, we, we can't wait to show off how smart we are, only to uh, reveal how ignorant we are. And so Imam Muhammad was saying, for the wise leader, he said, that is the position the righteous. Wise leaders take. So this leader has two qualities, they're righteous first, and then they're wise. You gotta allow a wise people, but they're not righteous. So Imam Muhammad says, that is the position the righteous, wise leaders take. They take the same position, quote, we know nothing, you know God, we know not. That's the discipline we have to keep, dear believers. Even if you know the answer, don't take off running, you know, listen first. Cause you may not know the answer, you may only know a answer. But you don't know the answer. So we have to be very careful. That's wise leadership, that's wise leadership. We think about when the uh. When Prophet Muhammad sent the delegation to Ethiopia to get protection from the, the king, from the Nagels. I think the one who spoke was Jafar, but they just didn't take off responding to anything that the uh. Pagans who, who they sent to bring them back, they waited until they were asked to speak. So this is very, this is wisdom, this is very important wisdom. That the person who's leading, even though that you leading, you just hold your tongue until it's time. And the time's going, it's gonna come, but sometimes we just, we gotta say something, no, you don't. And, and we, we all have, have friends like that, maybe one time we were like that. And somebody who's older watching just say, say, boy, just shut up, shut up and listen. Go back to the old saying, the reason why you have two ears and one mouth. If you know the answer, right? So you can listen twice as much as you speak. So this is very good, I, I think. Imam Muhammad was saying, that we had to be all the time mindful of all you know and we don't know. Alhamdulillah. It's, again, we, we reiterating what we just read, Imam Muhammad said, here is a little more understanding. When they get in heaven, they will say, this resembles what we had before. That is what my students should be saying. They should be trying to see the likeness. They should be trying to see in my teaching what they used to believe. Or what they experienced in their life as seekers, so they do know something, they know a lot. So dear believers, Imam Muhammad, he's respecting our intelligence. He is respecting our intelligence. And says that we should be trying, he says, he says, my students. They should be trying to see the likeness. They should be trying to see in my teachings support for what they used to believe. And Prophet Muhammad said to his Sahabas, he says, those of you who are good now were good before. So this is why he should make us feel real good, dear believers. That we are not uh, just empty vessels. We have a life, we have life experiences, and we should be trying to find connections and commonalities and likeness. And what Imam Muhammad is teaching us in the life that we lived before. That says to us is that. For us to be here where we are now, dedicated students of Imam W D Muhammad. That before we got to where we are now, before we even heard Imam Muhammad speak. This, this is what I'm hearing, is that Allah had been preparing me, Michael Saheen, you. Since you ain't wearing diapers in kindergarten. All your life experiences, all my life experiences were shaping us, molding us. Giving us difficult moments, giving us good moments. But all of this was shaping and grooming and directing us toward to be where we are now. To be the students we are of the Quran. To be a follower of Muhammad the Prophet, and to be a, a student of Imam W D Muhammad. So Imam Muhammad is saying, his students should be looking for to similarities. And the likenesses of our life from before. Their support. He said, they should, his students, they should be trying to see in my teaching. Support for what they used to believe, what they experienced in their life as seekers. That's the key word, as seekers, we were looking for something. And some of us were very aggressive, or not aggressive, very conscientious. That we were looking for something, something unique, something special. That was speaking to the needs of us as a people, we were looking for something, and then we found it. And it's made clear with this life of Allah's law. Anybody have any comments on that, or any reflection on what Imam Muhammad was saying here? Cause this is very important. You know, we're not just hanging out, we're not just hanging out in the classroom. We are students in, in this classroom. Imam Muhammad the teacher, but you know, we had to be very, very, very intentional. And focused on what we're getting here, and how it's being delivered. And how, what we're gonna do with it once we get it. Uh, I see a few hands, when I see a three, okay, I'm gonna take them if I see them on my screens. Sister Minara, I'll see about five, six hands now, okay. Okay, Sister, Sister Mary Shahid, go here, please. Sister Mary? You are mute.
Can you hear me now?
Yes, ma'am.
Okay, one of the words Imam, uh, something like, I believe, one of the words Imam Muhammad uses, Allah was duly proportioning us. So all our experiences that, you know, up until now, you know, we can use those as uh, uh, prerequisites. Who are we being now, so I just wanted to bring that to light, that, that word that he used to always put emphasis on. As he is allowing preparing us uh, from then until now, something like.
Fully proportioned, yes. And you say, uh, prerequisite, I like that, yes. Alhamdulillah, very well, very well said, alhamdulillah, brother Michael Hamid, Imam Michael Hamid. You are muted again.
Assalamualaikum. Yes, um, you know, we, we, uh, those experiences that you spoke of. Produced in us, um, a body of knowledge. And uh, we, the same for Imam W D Muhammad. He be, he, he is a body of knowledge. And um, our. Our being mentored by him. uh, it, it, it opens up for us, it opens up for us, uh, in my opinion, a, a, a special reasoning ability. You know, to, the, the, because of the way he taught us, he focused on the, the logic of things. The logic of the Quran. The logic in Mother Nature. You know? The logic in our own, you know, you know, starting with ourselves, how we, how we be, how we began. And showing us that the human, the human being in our early development, that the logic of how we come into the world, the logic of how we're helpless, how that suggests that we owe a debt to life. And, um, I, I, I found that very significant, you know, in terms of how he gave us the keys to follow the logic, to follow that all knowledge is connected. And, uh, that, 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 that leads us to greater and greater help from Allah. You know, by virtue of how he, how he instructed us to grow, to grow as a human soul, to grow as an intellect. And to grow into greater and greater, uh, proportions of health and productivity. And, and I'll stop with that.
Yeah. Yeah, thank you, because if you were speaking, and I think my sister Mary has said it before too, about the prerequisites. This is kind of rhetorical question, but I think it's timely. And how many of us here can think of something in our past life that now makes more sense? That we were going through? And then, okay, somebody, somebody need to mute their, 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 uh, yeah, background noise. So maybe a TV or something, I don't know what it is. But anyway, there's something in our, in our life that we went through that and was, even our friends and our family members, you wanted to say something to them, but they were like, they were, you said, I ain't gonna say nothing because they're gonna laugh at me, or think I'm silly or whatever. But you were being shaped. And then you live back on, and you're saying, I was being, I was being prepared for this day, I didn't realize it. You may have been fifteen years old, may have been twelve years old, may have been twenty years old. But we all have experienced something in our lives. It's like, man, Allah been working on me for a long time. And that's what Imam Muhammad was saying here. His students, they should be trying to see in my teachings, support for what they used to believe, or what they experienced in their life as seekers. I'm emphasizing that part there. Imam Muhammad, he's calling us as his students to reflect. And to see what are we seeing as a likeness, because before that, just saying that, it says that when they get to heaven, they gonna say, ah, this resembles what I went through ten years ago, thirty years ago, fifty years ago. And now I'm getting the answers. Because heaven is not in the clouds, heaven is in a, a head, a brain that has clear understanding. Leadership is in the heavens. Brother Mohammed Sharif, New York.
Assalamualaikum. Brother Ma'am, so how you doing this morning?
Oh, I'm still doing, I ain't done yet, we got work to do.
Right, a lot of work to do. Yeah, I'd agree with what you were saying, that we have been prepared for this day, even when we were back in diapers, or coming out of diapers, we are being prepared for this day. No doubt about it. That's right. I remember when I was, I must have been, uh, around three or four years old. And our great grandmother, who was raising me, because my mother had left and basically going with her mother, who had gone up in the north area. While our work was going on. Like the forties going up and then, and factories, building, uh, vehicles and the war machine and all of that.
Right.
And he came up into the north and east and then I guess I got into that spotlight of what was happening, coming from the south, Montgomery, Alabama, to New York City and Detroit, and up in that area, and saw the bright lights and all the money and stuff. And a lot of them, they left home. My grandmother left, my mother left right behind her. And my grandmother said, no, you can go, but leave the baby here. And it looked like everywhere my great grandmother went, I had to keep my eye on her. I remember she would go to the bathroom, I would probably to the bathroom and sit right outside. Everywhere she went, I kept my eyes on her. I remember she told me once, she said, my great grandmother said, oh, mom, don't, don't leave me like mama left me, you know, and we were being prepared then for this day. Now I remember I got about ten, eleven years old. We go to the movie. And had a little girlfriend at that time, we back there, fast boys, fast girls. So anyway, and we had the movie about Jesus, and so I'm carrying that cross. And I was saying to myself, we was in the movie theater, I think Europeans were down on the first level, and we had of the second level. But anyway, but that couldn't see, see us too well, and and I was saying to myself, then if I'd been back that day, if Jesus carried that cross, I would have helped him carry that cross. And then I thought, and yeah, and the soldier probably beat you to death right there, if not, they just put you in prison, you know? But anyway, like we being prepared for this day, being prepared for that day. And pray be Allah, soon Imam W D Muhammad came in, he said, yes, this is what we were looking for.
That's what, secrets.
That's right. And we followed him right from the first time we heard his voice. Right on, and we're, we're still there with him. Pray be Allah.
Alhamdulillah. Thank you, thank you, and you know, and your life experiences, you know, I'm sure we all have similar reflections, alhamdulillah. Uh, yes, uh, Sister Martha.
Uh, yes, and I pray you can hear me better, I'm outside now.
Yeah, we can a lot better.
Okay, uh, the, the word philosopher came into my mind as to referring to my students. I remember, I remember studying, uh, you know, one philosopher from another, you know, Socrates and going back that far. And, and all of them, and you can identify their students by the language in which they used as a container of information. And, and that has come on through as we spoke about the frees, uh, over the Supreme, I mean, referencing the Supreme Court, uh, ideologies, getting the, the, the guidelines, so to speak, framework for thought. And so I leave it at philosophers and thoughts. And as their thoughts are coming through us here and now, from Imam W D Muhammad, alhamdulillah.
Yes, yes, alhamdulillah. Now, they, they, they can send me back to a lecture, Imam Muhammad, what he done years ago. When you mentioned about philosophers and being a student. And Imam Muhammad is, I mean, just, well, for me, it's very powerful, because they have, they have a saying that, uh, said Pluto, no, uh, Plato was a student of Socrates. And the most famous of his pupils. Now, you got to listen to this language, how Imam Muhammad, how he explained it. He says, he was his pupil. Now, there's student, and there's pupils. There's a connection, there's a distinction. N I I is called a pupil also. But if Socrates was the pupil of Plato, then he didn't have his own eyes, he was someone else's eyes. Does that make sense?
Yes, sir, seeing through the, now I'm about to say seeing through the lens, but, uh, yes, pupil, yes.
Well, but Imam Muhammad wanted us to have our own pupils.
Allah who act by, very distinct.
Yes, you know, you know, so, uh, let's have a respect for our intellect. Allah saying, wait, Allah said, I could have made all of you all, I could have forced you to be believers, but he want us to have our own pupil. Not to be someone else's pupil. Yeah, all these words, you know, I mean, I mean, Allah has blessed us tremendously. But I don't want to get too, but I just wanted to make that point. Yeah. Because it's so important. Imam Muhammad, he respects our individual intellect. Yes. Sister Minara, yes ma'am.
Yes, assalamualaikum. And I, I, I agree with, I think it was Brother Michael who said it, that we're being introduced, it's a system, um, being, um, laid out here. And, uh, Allah lets us know He evolves us stage by stage. So I can, I can see in my evolution, even from a young child, I always had this spirit of what's fair and what's not fair. I remember, uh, being in Sunday school, and they were teaching that the Jews were the chosen people. And my thing was, well, that's not fair. Why, why are they chosen? What have they done to be chosen? But what's the point of all of us striving so hard if they already been chosen? So it was like, that's not fair. And, uh, that, those type of things stuck out with me all through my childhood, you know? And, uh, my mama used to call me the little attorney, you know, but, uh, because I was always looking at the fairness of things. So when I read, when I went away to college, and, uh, I got a, a paper, uh, I think it was the, uh, I forgot the name of the paper at that time, it was like seventy-six, seventy-seven. I, um, they had the, the final sermon of Prophet Muhammad, Sallallahu Alaihi Wasallam, on the back of it.
Uh, also, so you said paper, you meant the newspaper?
The Muslim newspaper. At the time, I, I forgot the, I'd have to think about it. It wasn't Bilaliyan News yet, it was before Bilaliyan News. When I read that, when I read that, that,
Muhammad speaks.
Muhammad speaks, yes, thank you, Imam Quraan. Yeah, when I, when I read that, all those things I was feeling, those aspirations, it answered it. You know, no, no, the best of you is the most righteous of you. That satisfied my spirit. So, the, the satisfied that aspiration, satisfied the spirit. It was familiar. I connected with it right away. And I haven't looked to go anywhere else. But right here, because of that, I said, well, this is the truth. This is the truth, and you recognize it is the truth, because your human aspirations, Allah is moving us in so many different ways through our human aspirations to, um, and evolving us stage by stage. So it will be familiar. When we learn something, it will be familiar. Even if we don't understand it right away, it, it, it reaches our soul. And, uh, we, we have that guidance that this is the course, this is the path, so. And this system of, uh, of, of, of understanding how Allah evolves us and guides us, is, uh, Imam telling us it would be familiar. And I remember him saying, once the paradise will be familiar with us, we won't live this life and then go somewhere, and like our paradise is underwater. Now, the paradise itself will be familiar with, uh, to us, so. It's, it's a science and a system that, uh, the Imam is laying out here, so alhamdulillah.
Alhamdulillah, and now Imam is laying it out, but but I'm reading it again. Uh, because you're right, Sister, uh, Minara. The Imam says, they, referring to us, should be trying, that's effort, right? To see in his teaching, support for what we used to believe, or what we have experienced. So that is saying to me is that Allah in His magnificent plan allowed us to experience certain things. But now Imam Muhammad is giving us, maybe it's a challenge, that we should be saying that Allah in His mercy put in Imam Muhammad the answers to what we experienced, Chicago, Indianapolis, South America, whatever, and that we're here as a community. And not intentionally, but yeah, intentionally, ethically, those life experiences that we couldn't quite make sense of in, in Imam Muhammad's teachings, Allah is answering those past experiences, urges, seeking, yearnings, however you want to phrase it. It is, we should be trying to find the answers for it in Imam Muhammad's body of knowledge. And that's what I'm saying, in this one sentence. I read it again. They should be trying to see in my teaching, support for what they used to believe or experience. Brother Michael, Imam Michael Hamid.
Yes, sir, you, when you related the idea of our own pupils, uh, excuse me, the, the, the verse in the Quran where Jesus, Alaihissalam, asked the question, who will be my helpers? And the report, the response of the disciples was, we are Allah's helpers. Showed me the logic when the Imam identified us as his associates, and not as his assistants. So alhamdulillah, you know, he, he's, he's bringing forth language and logic from the Quran. Alhamdulillah, that's what I was seeing.
Yes, once again, it's showing respect for us as individuals as well. Yes. So, uh, we have to have our own pupils. Otherwise, we, we are allowed to have our own pupils. You know, Frankenstein did have his own brain. They had to go get a dead man's brain. Yeah, but, okay. Let's, let's, let's keep going. Any other comments? Okay. We are now on page ninety-seven, subtitle, Person, Original Copy. And it says, in zero two, I guess thirty through I guess thirty-three, is it includes Allah created man with His Spirit. Another subtitle, Human Essence and Identity. Imam Muhammad says, the perception of human essence and identity is pretty much the same in the history of philosophy, religion, myth, and science. Though the language differs in these categories. The subject matter is perceived by these different fields of knowledge. No, sorry. The subject matter as perceived by these different fields of knowledge is perceived in the same way. For the term people, the American Heritage Dictionary entry number five gives this meaning. Quote, the mass of ordinary persons, the populace. Okay, that's what it gives, okay? Again, number five, it says, the meaning for people is, quote, the mass of ordinary persons, the populace. Imam says, now, the same dictionary gives the meaning of populace. Populace, I'm sorry. P O P U L A C. Imam Muhammad says, and I quote, the general public, the masses. Then it gives a second entry, a population. There has been a change since our American culture abandoned its decency. In past times, to refer to a few individuals, it was common to refer to them as persons. They would say, how many do you have with you? You would say, quote, I have two individuals with myself, or I have two persons and myself. Now it has changed. I have two people and myself. Subtitle, person and individual or a, or a specified character. Now again, the American Heritage Dictionary's definition of person, entry number two, an individual, a specified character. Entry number three, the self. In the Quran, it is Anas, the self. What did God create? He created the self. It did not say people. He created the self and how he created it, the language is in the Quran. Now I go to again entry number seven of the American Heritage Dictionary's definition for person. Quote, in Christianity, any other separate individualities of the Father, the Son and Holy Spirit, end quote. If this language, if this language for, from us, the man had been conceived, but had not been completed as a creation. And the angels, according to our scripture, the Quran, the Muslim holy book, were disturbed by the thought that a human being is being created with free will and its own decision to make with its own version of power or reason power. It disturbed the angels when God said he would make such a creature. They said, what is this? It is going, it is going to cause bloodshed and corruption. And God said, wait, he is not complete. Wait until I have given to him of my spirit. God says, wait until I have given to him of my own spirit. So if the American Heritage Dictionary definition has as one of the selves, the Holy Spirit, then according to our scripture, the spirit of God, which is the Holy Spirit, has to come into the body of people before they become persons and have human essence. Amin. Lord have mercy. It is so good to sit down at the table of the Lord and break bread. Someone may say, he sounds like church people now, like he is one of the church people. We have a lot in common and more than that. Okay, that was a lot, but I think we can get something from this. Let me just say what I'm seeing, I'm saying that Imam is using this American Heritage Dictionary to bring us to a Quranic, to give support for a Quranic concept. And the, the distinction is that before America lost her decency, they respected the individual as a person. But with the loss of the decency, they just lump everybody into a population, the populace, and say people. People versus person. When you say people, you know, the old saying, you get, put them all in the bag, shake them up, it don't make no difference who you pull out, they all the same. That's the population. They have no respect for them. But if they were to respect each one of us individual as a person, that has the breath of life of the spirit of Allah breathing to each person, then they would have more respect for us individually. But they don't. They, you know, that's why they say masses. And this is my own thinking, masses and asses, donkeys. They just, you know, they don't care about you as a person. You just a donkey, you're like a, just a brain ass. You get making a lot of noise. You have, I, I don't have to respect you as a person. I can throw you into the population and do you any kind of way I want to because you're not a person. I don't have to respect you because the spirit of God is not in you. Sister Martha.
Yes, yes. I, I, I'm, I'm going to relate to before that and reading Matthew the fifth chapter as Minaera stated to the aspirations. What, what pleased my heart and soul was connecting also through the nation of Islam at the time and remembering the fifth chapter spoke about the peacemakers shall inherit the earth. That fifth chapter I will read over and over and over again and, and just love it. And so to make the connection, praise be to Almighty God for Almighty God's revelation is what is connecting us truly. And so with the Imam speaking, sharing right there about persons. And I loved saying persona. Because when he mentioned about character, the definition mentioned about character and that persona, that's what stood out to me as well. So just giving that, making that relationship and keeping the drive, keeping the drive to, to maintain, knowing that we are, we should show effort in everything. Don't just settle to think that it's already complete. So I'll stop right there.
Yeah, well, I may push you a little further because she said something. Complete, you said the word complete. Because Imam Muhammad mentioned that how the angels, or those who would pretend to be angels, did not see man in his completion. They began to criticize him. But Allah says, wait until I read it to him of my own spirit. So then you, you are a person, you are, because the word person, individual, go back to nas, to your soul. You have a soul now. For a long time, they mistreated African Americans and women. They said they don't have that divine spark. So we can treat them any kind of way. And it's so sad to see many of our people, not just African Americans, but people in general, have sold themselves cheap as if they don't have a soul. And so that we are abused. And they're people, and they begin to form laws in, in, in the halls and the, and the, in, in the legacies based on us not being human, but being respected as individuals. They, you know, they have a meat cake, you know, the, the kind of mentality. You don't have to respect them. But once they see in you that you are a what's the word, that the, the breath of God is in you. As a, as a person, they have to reconsider you. But you are not, as they call it. Where I had an older brother, he used to always tell me all the time, he said, a certain trend was coming into the, into fashion. And he was saying that that is for public consumption. He kept saying that that's, that's for public assumption. And what he, I found out what he was saying was that they have certain knowledge they set aside to them for themselves. They don't give that to the public. It's like the public is not worthy of this knowledge or worthy of this insight. They're gonna say that for their sons and for their daughters. But for the public assumption, let's give them BS. Give them BS. Give them all kinds of song, dance, funky this, dirty that, vulgar that. That's for the people. But for the person, oh, you can't do them like that because the spirit of God is in there. Anybody else have any comments on this?
Yes, it's Minderah, you know, and I've been, I've been studying this lately as to how, how we identify ourselves and this, this idea of being an individual and the connotation that I get from that word individual is that, you know, stand, you stand alone. You are one. You know, and this doesn't line up with how Allah speaks about mankind in the Holy Quran or how Allah, how Allah introduces mankind to us. You know, we are all believers or all mankind, male or female. But in all those aspects, there is connection. And there is connection, there's shura, there's Allah's rule. Allah's spirit being placed within us. So we are never at a point in creation as Allah introduces us where we are alone or standing alone as an individual. We are always connected. And then Allah says, he, we are born into communities. So we're always connected, even before Father and Mother. We are Allah's creation. We have that connection. And Allah breathes into us of His rule. So we are connected with our Lord in the womb. So we're always connected and we don't stand alone. And this idea of just standing alone, being an individual can lead to people having a certain right to do exactly what they want to do, even if it's against. Even if it's against themselves or is against what is reasonable, is against what is lawful, you know? And it, it, it kinda, you know, has a certain connotation to it. And I even hear the word divide in individual.
But with the I N negates that division, right?
It's like into, into division. The I N is in, is in, is in, you're into something.
If something is complete, it's done, but you put the I N in front of it, it's not complete.
Yes.
Okay, so divided is dividual, but you say individual, you're saying you're not divided. You're one whole. You, you're one whole. And Allah respects us each as an individual and don't believe, you don't believe it.
As a person, as a creation.
It's question, and on the day of judgment, you're gonna be there by yourself.
You have to answer for your deeds.
Yeah, but you have to stand on your own two feet. It says, each tongue still on its own bottom. But the key word that you use, Sister Minaera, that said, yes, I am an individual, but I must be connected. That's the key word.
Yeah, so we're relational, we're relational. We, we, we always have a relation, a connection. Yeah. And, and that, that is not to be broken. And the way individuals are introduced, it's like it doesn't matter if it's broken or not. You can go against the grain. You can, you can, you can, you're free to be a criminal. You're free to be a criminal. You're free to break the law. You're free to misuse or mistreat or disrespect. You're free to do those things. And so, you know, I've been, I've been studying that lately. It's been, you know, so seeing ourselves as believers is so liberating.
Yes, yes, it is.
And, and, and knowing that we are connected to Allah, subhanahu wa ta'ala, and we have this connection. And it's we're not free to just recreate ourselves into anything and everything that we want to.
Well, we are, but we got paid for, we are, but
I'm, I'm saying, yeah, yeah. Yeah, but that's done without the knowledge of us being connected to Allah in many instances.
That's true.
You know, and it is, the believer wants to please the, our Lord. So no, we're not gonna even go in that route, you know? But those who don't, aren't connected with that reality, they, they become lost.
Yes, ma'am.
So, Alhamdulillah.
Thank you very much. Thank you. Also, what we can see here, I think we can see this because there's always continuity, there's connection, there's continuity. In this case, here I'm saying continuity of thought from Imam Muhammad. If you go back where he began to talk about language and how no matter what you believe in, if you're a believer, maybe a Muslim, Christian, Jew, a savior, that you see the belief. And he talked about the beauty of America and also the, the balance of with the other, but emphasizing the beauty. And then from that, if you follow the line of thought and what we're reading today, he directs our attention to the American heritage. And he kept saying, now, he could have just said dictionary, he kept saying, American heritage. Now, maybe I'm being too picky, but I don't think I am because Imam Muhammad did not mince words. Each word had a place. And he kept saying, American, that's one word. Heritage, that's another word, dictionary. I know it's one phrase, but that's not how I look at it. And he kept saying, American culture. And then, and each time you go down further, where he said person, individual, he says, American Heritage Dictionary, over and over again. So he's using the good language to show us support for a Quranic idea. Does that make sense?
Yes, and, 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 I'm sorry, I have my hand raised.
Oh, you did? Oh, go ahead.
Yeah, but and, and it is like Imam is also instructing us on how these words are used in our American culture. Stressing the American Heritage Dictionary, okay? So the, the, the how a word is used and understood in the culture has an effect of shaping our understanding of, of the word. You know, so if, if I You know, so if, if I, uh, was to, to, again, using that word individual, if I was to connect that to the Isley Brothers song, It's Your Thing, Do What You Wanna Do. You know? It's a popular song in the culture. People are introduced to it, influenced by this music. And, uh, they tell you, you're an individual and you have rights and you can do what you wanna do and you can't be not. And how, how a word is introduced in the culture uh, and practiced in the culture
Mm hmm.
produces a certain reaction to the word.
Right, and that's put out for a public consumption.
For public consumption, yes.
For the public to consume that bogus idea, it's just saying, it's not good thing.
Right. Yeah.
Yeah. Very good observation, very good observation, humbly, Allah. Let's see, it's almost nine o'clock. Okay. Okay, let's continue, where we stop at. But I do just want to say here, I guess count them too. I may have missed one, but four times where the Imam could have just said the dictionary, but four individual times, he gave the whole name, the American heritage. We know what a heritage is, that's what you inherit, right? Dictionary, and he uses the full name each time. So sometimes we have to be listening with a sharpened ear. The Imam can't tell us everything in detail. You got to hit it and get it and keep going. And the, the sharp student will say, why is the Imam saying the whole name? Not once, not twice, not three times, but four times. It's not doing, uh, to get with the mind, he wants to give attention to those words. Okay. We are now on page ninety-eight subtitle, Originals and Copies of Humans. Imam says, "For the three Abrahamic faith communities, that is Judaism, Christianity and Islam, or Jews, Christians and Muslims, people are not necessarily persons or originals." I can stop right there, boy, that's a good one. I'm keep reading. Imam says, "In the business department, especially the business office, you have copies and originals. Those copies are okay, but many of these copies in human beings that we see in this wasted public of ours, they are not, they do not resemble the originals hardly at all. People are not necessarily persons or originals in the nature of man as created by God. Considering what has been said so far before the human essence and identity, many individuals in our population can be classified as people, as the public. But we have to reserve the right to identify them simply as people without human essence." Well, yes, now, I'm, I got one last part to read here. Cause this is good here. Subtitle, "When human essence is lost, identity is lost. When human essence is lost, identity is lost. If there is no human essence present, though it may be residing in the quiet recesses of your human soul and you are not doing anything to bring it up to your conscious, you are a void of human essence. Such persons tend to be like copycats. They get their lifestyle, living form or behavioral form from whatever attracts them in the environment. The popular lifestyle for our general public today is too playful and too disrespectful." We got thirty minutes, people. Digest, to talk about it first, you can't digest it till you talk about it. Talking about information is like chewing on, on food. You can't swallow, but you chewing on till you have, broke it down with your wisdom teeth, with your wisdom tooth. They call it wisdom tooth. So, any, any comments? Sister Manel, your hands still up, go ahead.
Yes, yes, and, uh, Imam was talking about copycats and, you know, this is a, a copycat criminals. They see something in the media and the person without that human essence can see that. And, uh, say, well, I can do it better than that and, and go and try to do the same thing. Because it's introduced to them in their environment. And the person, for, for, for so many different reasons. Uh, where people have lost their connection with Allah, Subhanahu Wa Ta'ala, and they are not connected to anything. Not even to what their parents have taught them, if their parents have tried to instill good character and morals uh, into them. And they feel that they don't have to listen. They just go a different route and they just become copycats of what they see. And this ties into so much, including, um, media influence. Where our younger generation is so vulnerable to uh, um, just copying what they see. Uh, speaking gestures, hand gestures, body language. Uh, just, just copying what they see because the, the, the connection to Allah, Subhanahu Wa Ta'ala and their moral connections are, are, are not there. Their human essence is subdued.
Well, Sister Manel, if I may add to what you're saying, cause you're right. We have seen African Americans become Muslim and copycat every hand movement of the Arabs or the foreign.
Mm hmm.
You know, and even like choice of words, it's like, say, you're a copycat, you are not an original.
Mm hmm.
And you pray five times a day, that's good. You may hide how many times it's good, but you are not an original. And it goes back to the uh, understanding of what the Albaulah Muhammad would say as the, the original man. It don't necessarily mean the first man, it may be your original self, go back to your original feature, your original nature.
And reverting the wombs that bore you.
Yes.
Alhamdulillah.
Yes, alhamdulillah. Anybody else have any comments on this? Cause this is really impactful. Cause I- I- Imam says, you, people are not necessarily persons or persons or originals. Cause we are copycat now, someone, brother Imam Michael Hamid.
Submissions, can you hear me?
Very well, yes, sir.
I, I, I remember Imam Mohammed, uh, breaking the word person down and I, 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 I went to the dictionary and, uh, uh, it, it, it gave the, the meanings that were expressed. But, uh, then I broke the word down per and son. And Imam did that early on, uh, per, P E R, by the means of agency. With respect to every member of a specific group. Accor- according to, just a minute. According to per instructions.
Yes.
Third meaning, often used as, often used with as, as per usual. And then S O N is sound. You know, sauna, you know, sa- sound. And I remember distinctly the Imam showing us that. And I'm, I'm finding just as doing, I, 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 I don't do this often, just as during the, uh, the, uh, the, the, the virus epidemic, you know? They changed the meaning of, of, um, uh, the, the protocol, you know? Where the protocol dealt with, uh, 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 what is it? Uh, the injection, not injections, uh, uh, is it serums? I ca- I, I'm, I'm trying to be very, I'm trying to be quick and not, not, not belabor the issue, you know, to be brief.
No, no, well, well, see, I weathered, had you belabor.
I know, I know, it's, it's a discipline I put on myself, yeah, but anyway.
See, but your discipline may be like giving us the best of you.
Well, I, 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 if I, if I'm brief, I can maybe come back, you know, be invited back. For a follow-up, that's the way I'm thinking, you know? Uh, but, uh, yeah, the, the, the me, I, I'm looking at even the etymology dictionary has been watered down, has been weakened. Cause they don't want, they don't want the public to have meaning, you know, and meaning origins. And, uh, I'm trying to, I'm trying to work with this AI. And I changed the language and I, 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 I demanded that my AI clone, uh, use with me, uh, what is it, AI, uh, IA, IA, intelligent, intelligence assistance is what I said, this is what I'm using, you know, I don't wanna use AI clone. I wanna use intelligent assistance. And I want to use an unabridged etymology dictionary along with, uh, the Lane's Lexicon, Origin of Arabic Word Meanings, you know? In terms of building what I want to use AI for, you know? And, um, so, uh, you know, we can, we can make the, i- i- in fact, those that teach it tell us, you don't give up your, your, your intelligence over to this AI. You have to, you have to insist, yes, sir, you have to insist upon it. Being, being an assistant to you.
Yeah, well, and if I may inject it
Yes.
on, on, on that point. But the first time I heard the term artificial intelligence, that's the artificial meaning, it's not real. So they're telling us you're using, you're not using real intelligence. Why? Because you're not using your own intelligence.
Yes.
And that muscle, that brain muscle is going to become lazy and you will not be able to discern or to question. You, uh, you know, how many people now pick up, so they got in the house? Uh, they, they say Alexis, they call on Alexis. They call on Alexis, boy, and they call on Allah, Alexis.
Yeah, yeah.
So you ain't gotta use your brain no more. You ain't gotta think no more, you ain't gotta be rational or question or, or compare. You get called on, the computer pushed the buttons and there's the answer, but was your brain involved in the process? No. That's why it's artificial intelligence. Because your intelligence had been put to sleep, if not totally killed.
And, and I like the way you brought up the, the manner in which the Imam Mohammed is, is, I'll say, leaving clues, the American heritage. Okay, what is that heritage? Uh, it's, it's, it's a heritage from the, and Imam was a very insightful, social, social relationship thinker or sociology. Imam understood the, the developmental, the dev- developmental origin of, of the, and he spoke on it, the developmental origin of European life.
Hmm.
Lack, you know, being based upon lack, not having enough. And that's the psychology that you hear, you know? Art of, the, the idea of artificial in- intelligence. It's, it's, it's based upon their environmental influences and development. You know, the aggressive behavior, the not having enough, not being enough. You know, it's all in that environmental development over time. The, the aggressive, uh, warring, uh, or, or combative nature to be in combat. And, and not only just be in combat, but being excellent in that, in, in, in that, you know? And persistent in that.
But, 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 yeah, real quickly. Imam showed us about the plan of the Jacobite and how they seen this European development without leadership. And they got, there was, we say Judeo-Christian, American, it, it, it don't say Christian Judeo. Judeo come first.
That's right.
Then Christian.
Yes.
Because they saw this, uh, energy of these people.
Okay.
So whether people cruel or brutal, they said, if I can just put my brain in their thinking, I can rule the world. And there's a Bible verse, this, it's in Book of Romans. It says that the Jewish nation was about to die out, I'm paraphrasing, but they cut off one of their branches. And they grafted, they were grafting, right?
Yes, sir.
The, the branch of the Gentiles, so that the whole tree, the whole Jewish tree could survive. And it was like that way un- until the fullness of the Gentile. Then they told this grafted end branch, you don't go to the root, buddy. You know?
Yes. Yes.
So that Imam, he was showing us that, that is a scheme, talking about the, the development of the origin of European life. But there was some mentality that went in, they ta- they, they tell the story in a different way. That they showed Moses as the leader of the Jewish people, right?
Yes.
Moses, the name Musa, look up the word Musa in Arabic. It means a razor, how a man go in the morning, he shaved his face.
Yes, yes.
But they said that this Moses, he went up to the cave people, right? And he shaved, he shaved the hair off of them.
And cut off what?
And, wait. Tell me, I don't know anything.
He cut off the tail.
Yeah, cut off the tail and then gave them an apron to cover up their shame, right?
Yeah, yeah.
Now, you know, and so that is the, the message that's being said over and over again, is that how they took their energy and used it. That's why our governments threw billions of dollars to Israel to kill the Palestinians.
People, people, people don't connect, make those connections by and large, you're right.
Okay, so, and I know we kinda went off on a tangent, but it's a good tangent.
Yeah.
Because we need to know where we at and our role. And, and how we are innocent enough to do this.
I worked, I worked, I worked in, in, in the supply, I ran, uh, I, I came, I came to run a, a cold storage warehouse in, in Keflavik, Iceland. And the civilian was an old man, he had to be in his sixties. And he asked me if I had a tail. And you know where that came from?
Right.
And I, I'll start with that.
Yeah, you know, and, and we got two hands up, I'm gonna get to the two hands. But let's go back. Cause this is so important. We going back to page ninety-seven, where it says, human essence and identity. Okay? And it says, "The perception of human essence and identity is pretty much the same in history of philosophy." That's one, right? What's the second one, religion? Third one, myth, Greek mythology, Egyptian mythology, right? The Roman mythology? And the other one is science. Imam gave four distinct expressions or bodies or sources of knowledge. Again, philosophy, religion, myth and science. And it says, "And though the language differs from these four sources in these categories," he says, "the subject matter is perceived by these, these different fields of knowledge is perceived the same." So they're all telling the same story, scripturally.
Yes.
Mythologically, mythology, and science, all telling the same dang on story, all of them.
And you see that presentation in the narratives of the Quran in terms of the guidance. I, I noticed that when I lived in Atlanta and was starting to study the Arabic. Uh, and when I got to the letter Ra, the R sound, Ra, Ra. I thought right away about Egyptology, you know, and the, the, the God Ra, you know?
It all ties in.
Yes, yes.
It all, it's all connected. And so the Quran came to correct sometimes spank, sometimes to spank him. To, to get the knowledge right. This is, this is the book, the hell the God can tell me about me, this is the book, it is God in sure. And really, it's not saying this is saying that, that's, that's another title in. Uh, I see a hand up, there's. What up, Sam? Yes, go ahead.
Yes, uh, this is Kareem Hamid.
Yes, sir.
The subject of original. You know, we are, we know, and it has been expressed to us, that we have an identity crisis. We don't know what to call ourselves. Others, uh, yeah, others have given us terminology.
Yes, sir.
Uh, the idea of a color coding, a color base.
Hmm.
Black, black people. And we want to definitely get away from that, uh, that satanic language. Uh, I'm thinking, and praise be to Allah, the Imam is addressing a subject based upon my thought, you know, thinking. And science bears witness that the origin of human life began on the continent of Africa.
Yes, it's true.
And that the, and that the human being gradually migrated to other regions of the earth. But they got their beginning from the origin. We should call ourselves the original. The original, that's who we are.
Original man.
We are the original. That is what I hope that we can apply in our language.
You know what I mean?
Science bears witness. Science bears witness that the human being got its birth in the region that we now call Africa. And that these were people of color, and they are the original. So I hope that we can adopt that language. And I just define us. I'll stop right there, my brother. Thank you.
Yeah, thank you. And I also just wanted to add, once you were speaking, uh, Brother Man, you mentioned how color was used, and even Mr. Farad, in his wisdom, gave us a hint. He called the white man the colored man. Because the white man has given color to, to, to things and divided us based on race.
That's right.
And when you add color to something, you're influencing it.
Right.
Yes, Alhamdulillah. I think Sister Menares hands us up, uh, now.
I'll be brief, I'll be brief. You know, the, the, the study of language is so valuable, so important that um, at the same time, they were writing, uh, We the People in order to form a more perfect union, they made sure they put language in there that distinguished us of not being the people by labeling us as three fifths uh, of a human. Uh, so, and that, that duality there, which is, that has been abolished, but the sting of it is still there. And that in, in religion, how uh, the darker people are, are, are those who should be slaves or servants? Even though more science, math, astrology, everything has been produced from the darker people. They can't get away from the notion that you don't know, you have to be managed and you're a lower class. You know, all these things are tied together and the languages that are used that produce certain understandings among people uh, in the environment, like someone asking Brother Michael, did he have a tail? Uh, and this is based on uh, information that they have received that they are eager to believe because it gives them a position of a, a better human essence. That they don't have to work for, they just inherit. So it's just, it's just all tied in. Through the, through the language and our connection with our Lord, uh, may Allah guide us all.
Amen.
Better understanding and to be better uh, equipped to challenge all of these false narratives and notions that are still in the culture, you know? And we see so much has been exposed since uh, our current president has been in the office in the forefront as to the underbelly, as they call it, of uh, of the culture. You would think that they had never been challenged on any of these old beliefs.
Sister Menera, you're right. Now, they changed the law from three fifths and took that out. And now, and that's easy to do in, in the legislature, cause it's the right thing to do. And it's easy to do to take an opinion and to change it. But you cannot legislate morality, and you cannot legislate a person's personal thinking. And that's the battle we find in now with this current president. We realize just how deep that ugliness was in certain people. Because his presidency allowed to fester, it's already been festering for hundreds of years. But his presidency, presidency allowed that, that pimple to burst, so to speak. For all that pus to come out, and, and, cause you cannot legislate someone's morality or their thinking. So what does that mean? It is still the job. It's, it always has seemed to be the job of the African American to continue to civilize like crazy white man. We, we've been doing it since we've been here. And we're not done yet. It's nine twenty-one, Sister Menera, how, how are we doing?
Thank you. Uh, we're doing, we're doing well. Uh, if you have any comments on anything we've studied this morning, now is the time to briefly state them or ask a question. Uh, we're gonna be preparing for uh, the next show and then in nine minutes.
Alhamdulillah.
I'm very, uh, I learned a lot this morning, it helped me understand my thinking and my uh, uh, some ideas that I have been dwelling on brought some clarity. Uh, so, uh, it, looking forward to this program every morning, every Saturday morning, is, is a blessing to have this. You have a, a caller, seven two seven four oh eight.
Yes.
Assalamualaikum everybody, please be talah.
Please be talah, alaikum salam.
Alhamdulillah. I'll be now say the way he, the way he sees himself, period, is as a servant. And he thinks that, that's what he does. He serving the word of God. And so praise be to Allah that we have Kholan and we have the, the life, the example of Prophet Muhammad. And we, we serve God by serving humanity. So praise be to Allah, we doing a good job of learning how to serve. And Allah will continue to teach and guide us and protect us because of what we are doing in the life we live. This is our best Dawa, the Dawa is the way we live. So praise be to Allah. We thank you Allah for all that he have given us. And we want to utilize it, make it with you again. Alhamdulillah. Assalamualaikum.
Alaykum salam. That, that's from Brother Bilal. Alhamdulillah. Uh, let me get, read this one prayer, this closing paragraph again on page ninety-eight. Subtitle, when human essence is lost, identity is lost. Imam says, yeah, when human essence is lost, identity is lost. If there is no human essence present, though it may be residing in the quiet recesses of your human soul, and you are not doing anything to bring it up to your conscious, you are void of human essence. Such persons tend to be like copycats. They get their lifestyle, living form, or behavioral form from whatever attracts them in the environment. Popular lifestyle for our general public today is too playful and too disrespectful. Alhamdulillah. So we cannot be those who follow trends. Well, we follow the Quran. We follow the noble example of Prophet Muhammad, praise and peace be upon him. And we follow the guidance that Allah has given us and Imam, if you understood, if you understood, then you are excused from that. I think we're here because we are students, students of Islam, that give Muhammad. Okay, Sister Menera, just a couple announcements, if you may, and you probably do it anyway. Uh, the Muslim Journal, Time to Be Grateful is coming up in Newark, New Jersey. Imam said, that's a new arc. That's a, and Moses had an arc, now we got a new arc. Newark, New Jersey, Alhamdulillah, the Time to Be Grateful, December eleventh through the fourteenth. And also please subscribe to Muslim Journal, you can do an online subscription. You, you can have it come to your telephone, to your computer as well. Or if you're old school and you still need to hold that paper in your hand and lick your thumb when you turn that page, you can do the old school by mail subscription as well. But that is our institution, that also nobody else but us. It's, it's, it's about us, from us, for us. Alhamdulillah. And other, and just a recap, last weekend I was not here, as you know. We had our thirty-third consecutive Parents Appreciation Banquet here in Indianapolis. We had great support from really four or five cities, St. Louis came in big numbers. Had a whole family with three generations came from Michigan, the Taman and Farida Muhammad family in Michigan. I came from Columbus, Ohio, came from Springfield, Ohio, came from Atlantic, Georgia. I'm gonna leave somebody out.
Somebody from Cincinnati also.
Yeah, I know, I knew him, my sister was telling me.
Yeah, yeah. Cincinnati was in the house, it was in the house also, just as a reminder.
Yes, sir. Your, your brother Mark, then you out here for the whole weekend, you got about two minutes, you want to give a little reflection on last week?
Yeah, it was excellent, a part excellent, and uh, you know, Allah really blessed uh, the thirty-third uh, annual parenting appreciation weekend. Just to share a little reflection in terms of conversation with Imam Saeer. You know that this is a pivotal year for us as a community, the community Imam Wati Muhammad. Imam Muhammad was born in nineteen thirty-three. And his leadership started in nineteen seventy-five, and he transitioned in two thousand eight. Thirty-three years of leadership. And we also talked about in terms of the blessed month of Ramadan, it takes approximately thirty-three years for Ramadan to go through all the seasons and return approximately thirty-three years. I want to add one other in talking to uh, my engineer, Brother Ishmail. Water freezes at thirty-two degrees. Water begins to, I mean, ice, I mean, to ice, where it's frozen. But it is thirty-three degrees where it's unfrozen. So a hint to the wise is that in terms of immobilization of water being ice, it begins to unfall at thirty-three degrees. And I think if we look at that as us as a community, in terms of thirty-three degrees, and then we know the masons, thirty-three degrees. In that regard, so you see that thirty-three, and I was just saying to Imam Saeer that this is very significant uh, in terms of parenting appreciation, that it would happen in this year. Very pivotal year in the history of the community, W T Muhammad. I'll stop there, brother Imam, but.
Wait a minute, wait a minute, wait a minute now. Well, I just looked it up, I want to be sure. They calculated, though this is, this Christian teaches that, that Jesus's life here on earth was how many years?
Thirty-three.
Thirty-three? Yeah, there you go again. You see how we, you see how this, you see how the students of Imam Muhammad, you see how he has taught us to just continuously connect, 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 connect? So I just wanted to say congratulations to um, the community there and the leadership of uh, Imam Mikel Saeer. And steadfast, because it was a wonderful, wonderful occasion. The hospitality was great, we appreciate you greatly. Just keep on keeping on, that's all I can say to you. Alhamdulillah. Assalamualaikum.
And I want to say thank you to the believers here, hardworking brothers and sisters and the time they gave. But with that said, we're going to connect this program to the next program. We have with Imam Delese Umar.
Alhamdulillah. Thank you, Imam Mikel. Thank you for a wonderful program this morning and uh, sharing your insight, your wisdom in presenting this uh, Saturday morning, Tyleen. So next up, um, we're going to ask you to join us. Join us for uh, Preparing to Make It in the Land of Plenty, every Saturday morning here at nine thirty AM Eastern Time for an episode of Preparing to Make It in the Land of Plenty with Imam Delese Umar and recurring contributors Michael Hameen and Professor Rabani Muhammad for a practical discussion on gaining success at the individual, family, and community level to truly be prosperous in America. Prosperity is a good life while enjoying liberty and the pursuit of happiness. So Imam Delese, uh, Brother Michael Hameen, the mic is yours.
Sister Menera, have you did, done the administration on the YouTube?
Yes, you're live streaming.
Bismillahirrahmanirrahim. With Allah's name, the merciful benefactor, the merciful redeemer. We witness openly that there is no deity worthy of worship except one creator, Allah, who has created everything. And we witness that Prophet Muhammad is this prophet, messenger. Salaam alaikum, peace and blessings to everyone. I uh, had a, had a special presentation I wanted to address. And uh, it was, I wanted to take a look at in reference to its significance, the Prophet Muhammad's marriage to Lady Khadijah. Peace and blessings on the Prophet. May Allah be pleased with our mother Khadijah. And how that, how that message is a, a sign of uh, historically, and I, and I thought just referencing the present time. Wanted to look at the present time and how I, I was, I was, I was thinking on how Musa Ali Salam in uh, in his battle with Faroon, how he talked, how Allah addressed in the Quran that Faroon was the one who healed the male leadership and allowed the women to live. the women to live. This, this, this idea was historically perpetrated on the Hebrew children. But as we look at our life today, and even in this present time, we see an attack on our cultural life. Uh, we see, we see certainly our young men, African-Americans, I'm, I'm being a little specific here. The African-American males are populating the prisons by large numbers. I won't go into any statistical details, but they, they are phenomenal. They are really very out of proportion in terms of the population and also other minorities and other ethnic identities, et cetera, et cetera. It's, uh, we are very, very much overpopulating the prison systems. And, you know, and, and I'm looking at threats. I'm looking at threats that that's going to become even more prevalent while, while there's a movement to eradicate mostly day laborers from the, from the society in terms of the Hispanic community and, and ISIS grabbing people on the streets, shipping them out, putting them in detention centers, et cetera, et cetera. And there are already reports popping up that they are forcing labor out of these particular people. I think they have even to put a case or so in court. But all that being said, I wanted to look at and examine the, the relationship between the Prophet Muhammad SAW and his, and his wife Khadijah. This, this relationship was a very special relationship in that the Prophet started out as an employee. And, uh, he was employed by his wife as, uh, to act on her behalf in trade and business and commerce. He did it so well, and she was so impressed. And you know the story, I'm, I'm giving this story mainly for our non-Muslim listening audience, that she just, she sent a proposal to him for marriage. And he accepted that, and the history of that great relationship began. But I, I wanted to tie that into all of the, I would say, to bring it up to current times. When we look in this society now, our women, uh, have been allowed to become educated. While our males had the opportunity, maybe they squandered it, didn't take advantage of it, but they certainly had everything working against, against, I should say us, because I was in that, that area as well. I'm reminded of, uh, Tracy Chapman's song, Bang Bang Bang. Uh, she's, she's, there's a part where she says, he, he wants the chances that you took from him and nothing that you own. You know, so there are, there are, there are, there are opportunities that were taken from us, especially the males in the society. And it, it's been a real traumatic experience that has cost us a lot. But with that being said, I wanted to just examine that marriage and examine at the same time our relationships in terms of, uh, the success of our women. Uh, and it's no doubt our women are very successful in this society comparative to males. And, uh, they are, they are at the top echelon in writing and, and, and book, writing books on our history, et cetera, et cetera, serving in the health industries, et cetera. In fact, the COVID vaccine, one of our sisters were very relevant, prevalent in developing that, one of those vaccines. So even in medical and, uh, education, uh, plenty of success. And, you know, and, and I want to look at that and examine that and find out how we can have that type of relationship that was with, in these, in these, in these unions we have, where we have our partnership respected, just being partners. So Michael, I missed you several times. Uh, I did get to talk to the professor Rabani. But, uh, Professor, share some thoughts if you would. Is he with us, Michael?
Yes, sir.
And Salaam alaikum to both of you.
Alaykum assalam.
Wa alaykum as-salam, wa alaykum rahmanir rahim. With God's name, the merciful benefactor, the merciful redeemer. We witness that there is no God other than Allah. And we witness that Muhammad the Prophet, to whom the Quran was revealed, is, is servant and our Prophet, peace and blessing be upon him. Uh, that, this is a, this is a very convoluted, uh, complicated type of a subject because of the, uh, out, outside influences that have happened to us as a people. And one thing that I could always rely on is when I was, I was growing up. And, uh, there was a song since, uh, Imam, uh, Delacy was talking about a song. So here's a song that I remembered, and it had some gravity to it. Says you have to give a little, take a little, and let your poor heart break a little.
Yeah.
And that's the glory of love.
Yeah.
Yeah, I remember.
There's a lot to that, you know, because, uh, you know, uh, songwriters and poets, uh, although they don't practice what they, they write. Most poets, uh, but that's a good, uh, is a good for a young person. For me, it, it, I kept that in my mind, you know. So one of the things that you know, with your, uh, you have to see, the key, uh, in my thinking and the way I, I always observe is, how does that partner behave?
Yes.
Small things, small things. Okay, and, uh, you have to be patient when you're trying, trying to, uh, uh, engage in a, uh, marriage relationship. You have to, you have to be patient. And you have to observe a certain kind of, uh, uh, look at the small things. Look at the, the way that person, uh, uh, first of all, are they believers in God? That's number one. And if they, and if they, if they claim to be believers in God, let's see how they behave. You know, how do they treat the children? How do they speak to the, the elderly? How do they, how, these small things that they might not be sensitive, or you might not be sensitive to. Uh, but you observe, these are the criteria for yourself anyway. Uh, I know that, uh, I observed, uh, my, uh, Zosia for four, four years. Uh, looking at how, uh, she behaves, looking at how, uh, she respects other people. You don't, you don't even have to be in, in, in the position of being disrespectful. Look at the, look at the small things. And when you look at the small things, then you can project what it would be like if, uh, you're under the influence in this society where, uh, there's no, there's no respect for, uh, man, the man or the male and his job, his, his respect and his job. And, uh, that goes for the female and the male, you know. Uh, and how, you know, how, I was, I was always under pressure. Prophet Muhammad peace be upon him was, was, uh, doing housework when he was with, with his wife, taking care of, uh, uh, matters in the house, inside the house. And, uh, always assisting with, uh, uh, small things. These are the things that you have to look at. And those, those people who look at small things, then, you know, everything starts with an element, a door. A, a, a bar or a door, a doorway, a logic, that you follow that logic. Uh, and then you can, you can project out from that logic as a, a behavior pattern. So I, that's how I would, uh, look at, uh, the life and the pattern of Muhammad the Prophet, peace be upon him, and, and, and Lady Khadijah, peace and blessing be upon her too. So, uh, when we talk about relationships, okay.
Thank you. Thank you, Professor, Insha Allah. We appreciate that. So Michael, please, uh, you know, and I'm, I'm really looking at this as a, as a, as the Allah mentioned for the Prophet that you, you indeed having the Messenger of Allah, an excellent standard of conduct for any whose hope is in returning to Allah and meeting Allah in the paradise. So he's, he was said as a model for us and an example. And his model was also to be seen for females and males, uh, in his character, his character. So Michael, share some thoughts if you would.
Uh, yes, uh, Assalamualaikum. The the, the, the relationship environment has become very problematic, very, very difficult. And, uh, the why of it is not readily understood, or why, why relationships are so, so, so difficult. I was recently listening to a YouTube presentation where the, the idea of feminism was introduced as a government, a government, uh, project to, uh, to get women to be, uh, more focused on, on, uh, what, what is it called? Not, not relationship, to be more focused on, uh, their work.
Careers, yes.
Career, that's, that's the word I was looking for. Thank you. To be more focused on their careers. Well, that, 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 that followed from the World, World War II effort, and the women be invited, invited out of their homes to, uh, come into the factories to produce for the war effort. Then it progressed to this idea that the government had. And it, it is all, it's all materially based. It's all, all based on the profit, profit incentive that the marketplace leaders, uh, you know, that, that originally, as I read, they originally dealt with the demographics of the home. That is a father, a mother, and children. But then the idea came that we can make more money if we break the home life down to what, what, what we can interest the father in, what we can interest the mother in, and what we can interest the children in. So the, 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 the marketplace leaders had a lot to do with this relationship environment that we're in. And that, 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 you know, Prophet Muhammad, prayers and peace be upon him, was back uh, over fourteen hundred years ago. The envi, the environment, even though it was an, an environment of ignorance, it was more natural than what we have today. We, we, we've got an, an environment that is very hostile to the spirit, to the soul of the human being, male and female. And, uh, it's very difficult to live a natural human life with the influences that are, that are market-based by and large. The market-based influences and how they affect our relationships. And I'll start with that.
Yes. And you know, I, I want to, uh, I want to stay, I want to stay in my, in my contribution to, to the idea of, of, uh, breaking the pattern of how we see relationships and looking at how it was established in, in our sacred scripture and our, our relationships with the Prophet Muhammad, peace and blessing be upon him. How, because what has happened is just as you said, the, the influences of the society has shaped the way we view these issues of marriage, romance, et cetera, et cetera. But in, and when we look at the historic relationship with our Prophet and our, and our mother Khadijah, peace and blessings be upon her. Uh, it was a break. That was a, I, I, I seen that as a radical, uh, difference in terms of how relationships start and how they progress and, uh, how they prosper. And of course, we know that Prophet Muhammad, peace and blessing be upon him. He was, he was, he was a trustworthy person. And he had these, these noble character, had, had noble character as, as testified by Allah in the Quran. And in, and in the Sunnah, we see that he was that type of person. And of course, and, and, uh, his, and his wife Khadijah, she was actually a widow with children. So, and twenty years his senior, actually. And, uh, during that marriage. So there were so many, so many, I would say today, what we would call radical differences. And, and the whole table was flipped. The whole table was flipped. He, he, she employed him, et cetera. Normally, we see the males as the employers and et cetera, et cetera. So Professor, share some thoughts if you would, that regards.
And we, and we do have a, a hand up. Go ahead, Professor.
Yeah, that's, uh, that's the key. Trustworthiness and truthfulness. Uh, characteristic of Muhammad the Prophet, peace and blessing be upon him. And the reason why Quran was revealed on his natural human life that, uh, he displayed the natural life of being truthful and, uh, the natural life of being trustworthy, uh, in the, uh, context of the Anafi, uh, uh, I would say, uh, behavior or, uh, group that came out of Prophet Ibrahim, the Aisal. So, uh, those are, those are the key, uh, terms that if you want to have, uh, a successful relationship with, uh, with your wife or husband, maintain truthfulness and trustworthiness. And if you do that, it will be, uh, it will only build the, uh, bond not only of the two, but of the, of the family. Because, uh, you, you can, you can rely on, uh, words and actions of your mate, of your, uh, soldier that would allow you to, uh, grow and to be, uh, unencumbered by, uh, uh, fear of, uh, loss.
Yeah.
Uh, fear, okay?
Yes, sir. Thank you, Professor. Uh, so Michael, you said we had someone, hands raised?
Sister Manera, welcome.
Yes, can you hear me?
Yes, ma'am.
Alhamdulillah. Assalamualaikum to everyone, and thank you for this topic. I'll be brief. And, uh, it's very important to know that, um, our mother Khadijah, may Allah be pleased with her, and grant her the highest stations of paradise. Uh, there were people who wanted to marry her prior to, uh, her marrying our Prophet Muhammad, Sallallahu Alaihi Wasallam. And they were successful, wealthy people in business, but she, she, uh, uh, did not want to marry them. Okay, uh, but. as, uh, brother Rabani, I'm saying Imam Rabani was stating, it is, uh, the trustworthiness and the truthfulness of the Prophet, uh, that sealed the deal for her. Uh, he was a businessman, an excellent businessman, but he was able to extend care in a way where he respected her, respected her business and who she was. And he came into that situation and improved it. He added to the life, the business and the establishment of the character of, uh, our mother Khadijah. He improved it in all of those areas. Okay? Uh, never taking advantage because she was a woman, but was trustworthy and improved, um, her prior to even marrying her, proved her circum- improved her circumstances prior to even marrying her. So if we want to mirror those conditions in our present day, and the concerns are parallel. Prophet Muhammad knew, Sallallahu Alaihi Wasallam, we have, um, a new religion, a new people being born in that time. Working for the pagans was not going to help establish that. So establishing business among the believers was the solution. Where men, uh, there were, there were other women in business, uh, besides, um, our mother Khadijah. May Allah be pleased with her, uh, but not to the same level of success. But establishing business among the men and even brokering business between them. Establishing an Islamic financial system was necessary. And this also has to be duplicated among us. If our men are not getting the education, same education, if they have the freedom to go into business and to establish businesses and become self-sufficient um, in their own right, okay? But whatever relationship you're in, seek to improve it and, uh, be a plus to it. Uh, and know how to care and extend care to the other person. Uh, is, 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 is something that, um, we have to learn. Prophet Muhammad said, "I am the best to my wives." And that was, uh, to our mother Khadijah and when he was living in, uh, polygynous marry- marriages. He said, "He is the best." So he did the work to be the best husband that he could be to his wives. So all of this can be duplicated for us here in twenty twenty-five uh, in this society with our current conditions. No, it's not the interest of the Caucasian to elevate the African-American man or those in power to elevate the African-American man. That's not on their radar. That's not what they want to do. Okay? But nothing is stopping our brothers from going into business. You know, and, uh, becoming self-sufficient as Prophet Muhammad taught the believers to do in that Jahalil society to create a new system of economics and Islamic systems of econ- economics and finance, to remove all the usury and build businesses that are fair and just. And, uh, also have the right etiquette and, 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 and operating businesses. So I'll stop there.
Hey, thank you for that.
Yes, Sister Martha as well lined up.
Okay, uh, bring this, let's hear from Sister Martha, Michael.
And greetings and peace to everyone. Martha Naylor calling from St. Petersburg, Florida. Uh, well, my comment is, I'm, I'm thinking on conscious and the unconscious relationship that we all are made up of. And that I've come to believe that the, the, the things that we do consciously, that we seek to do no harm to our own unconscious self, and some would say our conscience will be our guide. And I, I, I find that personally doing something that will create a, a, a bad feeling in me is I'm, whatever I do consciously, it's, it's tormenting to my unconscious self. So I'm relating that to the, the masculine male, masculine feminine female relationship that in each, there is that kind, and prophets, uh, the Prophet prayers and peace be upon him, Prophet Muhammad, uh, can very, very well show that, that he did whatever he did. Whatever he did, it re- it, it did not cause, uh, an infraction or harm to his inner thought process, his inner self, that he could rest at night, he could sleep at night, and, and putting it on the hearts of those who had enslaved persons that they were to treat them like they would treat themselves, meaning he, he went past their conscious self, which was dealing with, uh, in, in, inhumane processes, but he went to their conscience and their unconscious self that they, to deal with that. So I'm, I'm doing that as a relationship, I'm saying it rather as a relationship to the male-female relationship that we each have to be kind to our inner self, our unconscious self. I'll stop right there.
Yes, thank you. Thank you, Sister Naylor. And you know, when I, when I looked at this topic, I was looking at it from, uh, the Prophet's behavior as a sign and a model for us as to how, how we can get out of the, I would say, the challenging situations that we have in terms of relationships, in terms of all of the things that were mentioned, finance, uh, uh, education. You know, all of the things that, all of the ingredients are there in this, in, in these relationships that we look at them from a male-female perspective, there's an imbalance. And during the Prophet time, there was an imbalance that was with his, with his wife, mother Khadijah. That was a, that was an imbalance. She was extraordinarily, extraordinary person. And, uh, we see that today in our society on the, on the, I would say, if we looking at societal, the societal situation is also similar, very similar in that, uh, the females have been uh, educated, they are more educated, and out, out their own initiative, we are not saying they would, nobody favored them. They worked hard and, and achieved those things. So that's, I was just comparing that and looking at that as a model in relationships, how do we duplicate that? And, uh, and to increase the general picture of the societal problems and, you know, and the things been mentioned so far, faith, trust, uh, hard work, all are good incorrect. But you know, that's doesn't, that, that, that won't fit in this realm of society until we actually change the cultural life. Till we change this picture and bring in that type of understanding that, that, that is, is opportunity other than the way we've been taught, the way we've been trained, or the way society has, has influenced. There was a lot talked about that earlier with Imam Mika Saeed. So, uh, where we at, Michael? Was you, your contribution? You want to make a contribution? We had your.
Yes, sir, please. Uh, the, again, the social influences, uh, are challenging, but the Quran has the formula, has the healing, has the ne- necessary, uh, knowledge capital to help us make these changes and awareness of how we are being influenced and, uh, you know, socially, socially, uh, uh, so socially affected by these influences in the social life that are not concerned about our humanity, but more concerned about us as a product or, you know, the, the purchasing of products and how that, how that has affected relationships. The, uh, the, the idea of romance was, was historically established. You know, you hearing the word Roman, you know, you hear Roman in the word romance. But dealing with, dealing with the emotions, the, the feelings, I looked up the word romance and it says, uh, "A feeling of excitement and mystery associated with love." Well, this idea of love has gotten, uh, gotten many of us in trouble. You know, a lot of us are in trouble over this idea of love. It's a feeling and feelings are fleeting. You know, love according to the, the, uh, Quranic narrative, the guidance, love is connected with, is, is, is Professor Rabani said, it's connected with behavior. Not, you know, not so much feelings. You know, we, we're told that women, women, uh, have an ear for, 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 for language and how, uh, how, how the language put into her ear can affect how she feels about things. You know, and so the, the un, uh, what do you call it? The, the, the unethical male will speak into the ear language that, that, that is attractive to her and, uh, not really deliver what he's putting in her ear. He's only putting it in her ear to, 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 to capture her. You know, but he's not putting in her ear things that, that she can rely upon in terms of, you know, his, his true intentions. So, um, I want to wind this up with this last point. Uh, now we have an environment where private matters are put into the public. You know, we've got all kinds of indecency and, you know, things that were, you know, intimacy was something that was kept private. You know, we've gone off the rails, you know, and hearing people tell about their private matters in the public and having no shame, you know, that is used. And, uh, there's a lot of cynicism that has been established because of what the, uh, the, the public, the, the, the public, uh, well, I say the media. What the media emphasizes are things that, uh, have invited this, this mindset of cynicism of, you know, uh, "I'm from, I'm from Missouri. You got to show me." Well, that, 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 that's good with the balance, but the idea of skepticism uh, beyond showing you, you know, you skeptical, every, I can't trust anything. You know, I don't even trust myself, you know, so I, I'll stop with that.
Yes, thank you. Professor, share some thoughts if you will on this topic. Very, very broad topic. Let me just say this. I wanted to bring this topic up because I, I don't hear it being discussed as much as in the, in the details and it, it being tied into as, as a sign, because we, we should see in our religion everything that's, that the Prophet did as a sign and, and those and, and something that we should be looking at seriously. We should look at it seriously. Go ahead. Go ahead, Professor.
Yes, uh, well, to Michael, yeah, uh, you know, um, we don't have, when we, when we go into a, a situation we want to get married, we don't have a pattern to say, well, okay, before you get married, you got to have a place to stay and a, and a place to, uh, 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 maintain the, 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 the family that you're about to, to, uh, generate. Uh, so you should be planning ahead before you even, uh, make a, make an approach for marriage that you have, uh, certain elements in place, you know? You get married, uh, at the justice of the peace down at the, uh, down at City Hall and, uh, you don't have no place to go after you leave the door. Where are you going? Where, where are you taking your wife? You can't go to Motel sixty-eight or six. You can't do that. So, uh, there, the, the, the community, this is where the community should come into play and have set up, uh, eh, arrangements where that person, male or female, should, uh, but especially the male should have the, uh, conveniences, the readily available to them to, uh, encourage marriage and to encourage the, the necess- necessities to, uh, have a successful marriage. And one of the things that a, a woman would be attracted to is the man's, uh, ability to take care of her and her children. Look at the birds. That bird before he go, he start making a nest. Now, nobody taught him how to build a nest. He wasn't an architect, so his nature is to build the, the, the nest. And, uh, and, and, and use that nest as an attraction uh, for the female birds. And the female bird looking at the nest, seeing how the nest is built, automatically knows that that, that person, that, that, that bird that built that nest will be, uh, available for protection and, and also to sustain that, 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 uh, new life, those new lives that are coming into, into, into that nest. So, and then of course, the mother is very, very, uh, readily, readily and available to fight anybody who tries to mess with that nest, you see? So you have that kind of spirit in birds.
Yes.
And, and, and that's what our community life is about, is to set up, uh, opportunities and instructions and a way of life, a way of life. That's, 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 Islam is the way of life, the, the, quoting of religion, is a way of life.
Yeah.
Have to be able to make sure that we have the, uh, availabilities for, for, to promote that kind of, uh, enthusiasm in, in terms of marriage and, and, uh, making, uh, the male, giving the male the opportunity to show his manliness, you see?
Hmm.
Follow a man, you know, you know, follow a man who showed that manliness. And when he, when, when, when we follow a man, it makes us man, manly, you know?
Yeah, yeah. Go ahead, Professor. You finished?
No, I was just, I was just going to say, so that's the, uh, uh, that's the tenor of, uh, uh, trying to, uh, correct the corruption. It was like Michael said, you know, when I was in the, in, in teaching at the university, I told my class, I said, you know, men are attracted by what they see. And the women are attracted by what they hear. I said, "Don't you know that's the, the, the pimps know that?" The pimps know, the first thing they want to see is what you like. They don't go, they don't just come at you. They, they study. And when they study you, they study what you like. And, uh, they're not going to bring you something that you don't like. They're going to bring you something that's going to attract you.
Yes.
But, but the, the makeup, he just, he, he knows that what he, he likes what he sees first. And he starts imagining things in his mind about what he sees, but he have no facts. He has no, no, uh, criteria. And that's why a lot of the females, they're interested in shoes, clothes and dresses and, uh, whatever that, whatever the style is to attract, as an attraction. And uh whatever that whatever the style is to attract, as an attraction.
Thank you, thank you, Professor, for sharing.
There has her hand up again.
Yes.
Yes, that's some like um, um, I think that sometimes as well. Uh African American men don't give themselves enough credit uh for what they have done. And um I'll say this because it was uh. African American men that did tremendous work. Uh during reconstruction for establishing African American communities. Um African American men went off to war and fought in wars. Uh to establish community life, to to get a piece of the American dream. And uh going off on the Second World War. Uh at the same time as our economic base and agriculture was failing in the United States. Uh, you know, prior to um. Prior to that, we had uh in nineteen hundred, uh we had uh seven hundred and fifty thousand black farms. Okay, and the highest it went up to was in nineteen twenty, uh, we had nine hundred and twenty five. Nine hundred and twenty six thousand, basically, um African American farms. The farm level started to decrease after uh after that. Because the system was changed for farming and because a lot of men did go off to war. And then when they came back from war, there was a a marriage boom for Caucasians. But there was not a marriage boom for African Americans because the economic base for African Americans was failing. Land ownership, farm ownership was decreasing and agriculture was our base. And now it's switching to industry where they're looking for jobs. And that writing was on the wall even back then, that we were putting ourselves in a position. Where our fate was tied to someone giving us a job. And away from uh us doing for self in agriculture. So that's the beginning of that, so that we didn't have that same marriage boom that Caucasians had. But at the same time, our marriage levels stayed consistent through uh nineteen fifty, beginning of nineteen fifty. And marriage and divorce for both began to decline, but it leveled off for Caucasians and ours did it continued to decline. So this has been something that has been taking place uh for years. And quietly and systematically, uh you're put in a position of reliance on others. For our uh economics and all of this did affect the family life, okay? So and then you get to the sixties and you think you lived in the third world country from all of the assassinations. Uh of our leaders and so this been an assault on. The African American family. And we're seeing. The effects of it in real time now, now when I went back and studied all this, I was like, I can't believe I lived through all this. You know, I lived through all these things happening in the in the sixties and the seventies and the decline. But I didn't see the big picture, when I looked at it, I was like, my goodness, this is just a frontal assault. On the African American family, so now we're here, now we're here, but we have the answers to what is needed. And Prophet Muhammad, Sallallahu Alaihi Wasallam, uh gave us the model of what to do. And how to do it and you look at. One thing that I was very interested in. Is that why does it seem as though? The care and concern that African Americans should have for each other is not present. And the only big rift I can find. Be between African American men and women historically in in this country was. Feminism coming on the scene and it was placed in a way where it uprooted. Or diminished the civil rights movement, it was fraced away in that way. Okay, that the civil rights movement was no longer being supported and women went off to feminism. And that is a delusion, that didn't, it didn't happen that way. Cause feminism was also born of women wanting the equal pay that the men had. At one time, women did the same job as men, but received half the pay. But now that they're becoming leaders of households, they wanted the same pay so that they can survive. Okay, all this was classified under fem- feminism and the women's movement, so it was posed as. Uh uh a combatant, men and women were combatants of each other now. Instead of working together as we did during the civil rights struggle. But that was a media narrative, okay, it was a survival mode for women now. Who were faced with taking care of households. Because men had to be put out of the home to receive welfare, which wasn't enough to live on, so it was all strategic. And uh until there is forgiveness and setting affairs right. And getting rid of false narratives and then modeling. What Prophet Muhammad, Sallallahu Alaihi Wasallam did. Um, I don't know if we'll get to the roots of the matters, we're not combatants to each other. And even now, it puzzles me as to why. After even knowing our circumstances and why we're in this situation, why our young men are going to prison. Why we're not seeing men return to communities in droves and leadership roles to. Stand up, take responsibility, stand their ground and do what's needed. Uh like that should be on front page of every news story, okay? Our men did uprisings during slavery, they didn't even have the weapons. But they fought with anything they can fight with. To the part where they had to bring the military in to shut some of those slave uprisings down. Our men went on frontline and and in Louisiana and 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 uh. Took the discrimination from the streetcars, okay, where they 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 made them equal. On so many level, our men's fought, okay, for the community, the community life. Fought to produce what was needed, raising Tuskegee Institute, building their own, baking their own bricks, doing whatever was needed. Okay, all of these things have to be duplicated, our ancestors did it. You know, and we have the model of Prophet Muhammad who showed us how. To affect the change of a whole continent during his lifetime. You know, and now still in place and but still struggling because some have left off the example of Prophet Muhammad. But the the model is there, but caring and. Putting forth that energy to protect and maintain and to care for. The community, the women need that from the men, the women and the children need that. From the men and Inshallah that can return on a national level. I know there are individual men that do that, so not referring that to all men, but. As a natural picture of thrust, so to speak.
You know, uh. Thank you for sharing that, let me just make a comment, Michael, then we bring Mohammed in. Uh, you know, uh, much was much was said there and. But I think the the biggest thing that I've that I'm recognizing is that. You know, if you keep doing the same thing, you're gonna keep getting the same results. And so we are, we are here now, new people on this planet and we have to, we have to flip the script. We have to change the way we are approaching things and that's that's the one of the reason I wanted to introduce this topic. Because we we've been doing the same things and getting the same results. So uh but Islam, when we, if we embrace how Islam presents these matters. And then we have a different, we have a different opportunity, so Mohammed, please come here, share what you have.
Yeah, uh, Astaghfirullahalalaykum, everyone. Well, we see that when here wasn't, it's talking off the cuff to say, she had done research.
Yeah. Lot of research, lot of.
Lot of research. Uh just one thing I want to say is, as far as our men going off the war. They were drafted, a lot of our men that were in business and education. Lot of other areas. But it was a draft, they drafted them, that's why they went went to the war.
Yes, sir.
And the women.
If 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 I might just interject, I'm so sorry, but they, our men had to make them accept them to go to war first before they was drafted. They didn't consider them human beings, a a whole human being, so they went to to war to be free.
There, we don't want to interrupt, brother, no, no, no one interrupted you, if you just hold on, just be patient, thank you. Go ahead, Mohammed.
You like say they were uh. Were drafted. And another thing that, and they also used our women. And they gave them the opportunity to go to the factories and work, I think I said that this morning, the program. They go into the factory and work, come from down south in Mississippi, Georgia and Alabama where they had a whole lot of prejudice. They gave them the opportunity to come to the east and the north is Detroit, Cleveland, Chicago. And work in the factories, producing the war machines. And the vehicles and all of that, they work in those factories. And they got caught up in the 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 glitter, of this fast life, they had money. All kinds of parties and fun was going on and a lot of them never came back to their their families, their children. They just got got caught up in the glitter glitter, and the women caught up in that situation and men going off the war, that left the vacuum. Now, only way that we can get go get over that. Is get back to what Prophet Muhammad said, I leave you two things to can and in my life example. And following Imam Dabbabi Muhammad, because we know he followed Prophet Muhammad. If we don't obey, we will fall into the same situation that happened with the Noah, people of Noah. The odd people, the Thaum, all of them that did not obey their leader that God gave them. So what happened to them and we're on the brink of the same thing happening to us today, and there's more in daytime. If we don't obey, the I I ask Allah's forgiveness. And repent, but we 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 what we didn't do, we didn't follow the leader that God gave us. We got to repent, otherwise. You you can see the end, end what happened to those before us, so thank you for taking my comments this morning.
Thank you, thank you, Mohammed, uh Edward Willis.
Astaghfirullahalalaykum, uh Sister Manera was trying to speak before me.
Yeah, but we 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 want, we want to have an order, that you know, we have to discipline ourselves. You know, and I I I I'm assisting that.
Okay, alright, okay, okay, then I'll I'll let me say what I have to say so that other people can speak. And hopefully, part of what I'm about to say was what part of what Sister Manera was about to say.
Okay.
Because it is a, it is an absolute falsehood when you're talking about World War Two in particular. To say that African American men were drafted, I had four uncles who fought in World War Two. One who got a Purple Heart. They had to beg to be able to enter the military. They were not accepting black men into the military of the United States of America. Black men did not enter World War Two until nineteen forty three. I had two uncles that walked from East Texas to Dallas, Texas to enlist in the Navy. In nineteen forty three. So that that part didn't happen, but I'm gonna, I want to go back to Prophet Muhammad, peace and blessings be upon him. When the proposal was made by Mother Khadijah, the marriage proposal, he initially said no. Because financially, he was not ready to be a husband. And he said as much to the individual who was sent to him with the proposal.
Yes.
His, but what had happened, he's like twenty four, twenty five years old, he's fifteen years older than him at established.
Yeah.
He's a common, everyday working person who got chosen for a job based on the fact. That he had been developed as a young man, he had been trained, not just to do business. Not just to be a herdsman of cattle or goats, but in character. There's a, there's an Islamic word for it, I think it's Tsawwa, I'm, my Arabic is not that good. But basically, it's an, it's the Arabic term for what we call chivalry. He was a servant of the community, he was nice to everybody. He was respectful of the old, the young, women, whatever, everything he did, he did it in an honest way. He didn't raise his voice, he wasn't loud talking people, he wasn't mean mugging people. He was an excellent human being and there was no Islam at that time. As any kind of codified religion, no Quran when he married Khadijah. He was raised right. And we have to start raising our sons correctly and properly training them.
I agree.
To be positive members of the community. Because if you can't be a positive member of the community, how the heck you gonna be a husband and a father? That added responsibility of being husband and father. You, you're doing okay if you're a positive member of the community, if you're making a contribution, you're not a liability. But now you want to be a husband and a father? You got, you need some help. You need someone to show you the way and maybe more than just your mother and father, you may need some uncles. You may need some play uncles, like we used to call them in the community, other men in the community that have raised you, some play play aunties. Who made sure that, you know, your belt was on right and if you had to wear a tie, that your tie was straight when they saw you, they helped raise you. We have to get back to that, we have to start preparing people for these roles and not assuming. That they're gonna pick up all the right stuff from all the other stuff that we give them, the phone and the pad and the computer. Whether on the social media and learning things that are detrimental to them. Or the little bit that the streets still add, that's detrimental to them. And the bad behavior that they see us do when we, as men, we don't respect our wives. Don't listen to them, turn our back to them when they're talking to us, act like we can't hear them when they're giving us correct instruction. Won't assist them in the things that they do, angry that they make more money than us. This is foolish stuff. We get ourselves straight and then we need to start properly raising our children, thank you.
Thank you.
So, we heard uh, we heard quite a bit about the man's responsibility. Now, maybe we should hear something about the women's responsibility in relationship. To see like, we're the bad guys, right?
It's 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 a lot of sensitivities around these issues.
Yes, and I I want to apologize for cutting in earlier, I I I'll be more conscious of that going forward, so.
Thank you.
And I apologize to Brother Mohammed, but I was going to. And I apologize to Brother Mohammed, but I was going to say exactly what, uh, Brother Edward Willis did say. They were not drafted at that time. World War One and World War Two, they volunteered. They had to fight to be, to participate. Um, Frederick Douglass had to go to the governor of Massachusetts to get him to, uh, use the Black Regiment in war. Okay, so it, it's, it's, uh, that narrative is very important. Their aspiration was to fight, was to establish, because they wanted to establish themselves as American citizens. And this was part of their appar- uh, aspiration to, uh, uh, earn freedom and to become rooted, uh, citizens of the country. And I just want to say also that during the time of Prophet Muhammad, Sallallahu Alaihi Wasallam. Uh, it's very important that we remember, uh, a narrative as well when it comes to the relationship of Prophet Muhammad and, uh, our mother Khadijah, may Allah be pleased with her. They, that was a climate of pagan worship. Okay? But Allah had preserved Khadijah, she was not of the pagans. Her uncle was a learned religious man, a learned religious Christian. Who, um, taught religion in that family. So she and her family were not of the pagans. So when Prophet Muhammad, when, 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 uh, the sisters, speaking on Khadijah's behalf, um, went back to Prophet Muhammad and said, what if, uh, money wasn't an option? It wasn't just about money not being an option. She was not of the pagans. How would Prophet Muhammad, Sallallahu Alaihi Wasallam, marry a pagan worshiper? That wasn't a suitable connection for our prophet. But Allah had placed Khadijah in a position to not be of the pagans and to have the money. And to have the business and to have those finances to support the prophet. So she was the believer in Allah, Subhanahu Wa Ta'ala. And what she did with her finances was also because of her belief in the oneness of God and establishing Islamic religion. Okay, so, uh, that narrative has to also be out front. And as far as, uh, women and our contribution is concerned. I think many women have tried to do the best they can with the hands that they have been dealt. But Imam Wati Muhammad told us something in a sister's meeting that was very important for us. And that was, don't try to be the mother and the father. Be the best mother you can be to your children. If you are a single parent, don't try to be the father. Be the best woman you can be. So that always leaves room for the man to show up and be the man. Because you're being and focusing on being the best woman that you can be and the best mother that you can be. And, um, we also have to really work hard not to be bitter about the circumstances of carrying so much weight and responsibility. I mean, this is the hand that we have been dealt with. There are worse hands in the world. Uh, that women have. So we have to nurture the soul and the heart in a way. Where that bitterness does not become rooted. And we can remain in our feminine energy, uh, during these times.
Thank you, Sister Manira, appreciate it very much.
Sister Martha and Brother Mohammed have their hands up.
Who, 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 go ahead, uh, Mohassin? Yeah, this break, Sister Mohassin, she hasn't had a chance to speak, then we are taking.
At, at Mohassin, Sister Martha.
Oh, Sister Martha, well. Bring your hand to the mic, please.
Alhamdulillah, thank you so much. I, I just want to add to the conversation. Um, the, the, the place that myths has taken in our development, all our development. Uh, Imam Delacey, when you mentioned about, you know, the, I'm, I'm calling it attack, but it's not attack. It's, it's just placing a lot of what we, what we envision, what we see. And, and, uh, again, I will repeat, uh, how the, how we consciously see things happening and what, how we respond to it. And is it satisfying to our unconscious self or our conscience? And, and dealing with the self. And, and our approach to this, the question that has been raised or the process that has been, uh, you know, put on the table for discussion. And to find our way and not repeat those areas that we've done and, and found the, the same answer, same answer, same answer. So I'll stop right there.
Yeah. Yeah, I guess I was just, I, you know, I guess when you look at the society, what I was referencing. The male is always getting the blame. Uh, but these relationships are partnerships. They are not, they are not in a vacuum where one person is responsible, they both have to be. So Mohammed, please come in.
Can you hear me?
Yes, sir.
Right. I accept some corrections that were made, where I'm gonna double check that concerning the draft, the draft involving terrorism going to the military. But when I get to the, the fast point, it's the last point is that is what I said about the people that came before us. Noah, the odd people, the Thamu and others came after them.
Yes, sir.
We get back to a point that I say you still gonna have to repent for not supporting Imam W D Muhammad. Remember, he told us in two thousand three that eighty percent, eight zero, eighty percent of the imams did not support the leadership. That's why I'm saying your only way out of this is to repent for not supporting the leadership that God gave you. I'll finish there. I won't say anything else.
Thank you, ma'am. I want to get to the professor. We've left him out for quite some time. And I'd like to hear his comments on what's been presented and what he has to share. So Professor, please come in if you would.
I was, uh, listening to you while I was dealing with the, uh, the landscape people, so. I was doing three things. Uh, you know, so no, I, I, uh, a lot, a lot I agree with and, uh, I, I just look at my, my own personal life and I see uh, how it related to my father and my grandfather. And then the men around, uh, our, uh, community. Uh, how they, uh, they would check you, okay? But I, my inspiration was always, uh, to establish a, a, a working life. Because that's all I, I know, you know, is that my grandfather who, uh, bought the land during a time when, uh, you know, it was, uh, it was a, uh, a, a, a great achievement, both, both of my grandfathers. And now I have the responsibility to continue that, uh, that effort. My father was a farmer and he, uh, also a man who was an inventor and a steel man, so. Uh, and my mother was, uh, a, uh, a, a practical.
I don't know, I think we lost connection.
Yeah, I, he just went out. You know, what I, what I wanted to make a comment. I remember the, the report from our prophet when he talked about Allah showing the angel Jabril, the creation. And how magnificent it was how Allah created it. And he said, oh, what a wonderful creation. How can anyone go wrong in a creation like that? And then he showed him the creation after the shaitan had had his hand in it. And it, and the, and the answer was the ob- obvious. Oh, how, how in the world can anyone go straight in a creation like that? And we are in this type of creation. Where, where, you know, all of the, all of the mentoring and teaching that you can give to your children, you're bringing them into a environment that has been altered so badly. Till they, it's, it's almost gonna, you're gonna have to have an exceptional child to navigate these type of conditions and come out sound. So I guess, uh, one reason I'm presenting this topic is to show that, uh, there needs to be a change in approach. And mainly from, from the family structure on up throughout the society. And that's what El Islam came to do. To change the status quo, to give us an opportunity to have a, a new look, a fresh look at culture of life. So, uh, share something if you would, Michael, please, while we wait for Professor to get back. Michael, are you there? Am I being heard?
Uh, yes, you are. He's probably trying to reconnect with, uh, Professor Abadi.
Okay, okay.
On the phone. You have a hand raised with Bilal.
Yeah, bring Bilal in. Bilal, come on in, please. Unmute yourself and come in.
Astaghfirullahalalaa. Thank you, my friend, because, uh, you know, what, what we want to do, you know, we, we want, every individual should have a desire or want to perform at his excellence. And keep our intention pure and not want to do harm to anybody. And Allah, he will be with us, he will love us, he will guide us, and he will protect us. And that is a very simple formula for a human being to strive and live a good life and live a productive life. Just with those key, those keys that it just gave.
Yes, sir.
Alhamdulillah, alhamdulillah, subhanahu wa ta'ala.
Yeah.
Astaghfirullahalalaa.
Thank you, my Salam. And you know, what I want to mention in regards to that, Bilal, thank you so much for that. Is, uh, our program is, is designed to challenge the, the established way of looking at things. And, and look at how the religion of El Islam presents an opportunity for us. And, and so I think when we are, when we are trying to get to a, a better society. We have to, we have to depend on this religion. And its principles, its, its, its history, all of those things to see how we can utilize the best of it. As the, the Quran mentioned, take the best thereof, take the best thereof. And bring it forward to see how it can help us. Did, uh, Michael get back yet?
Professor's, Professor's back.
Okay, Professor, please finish your thought, please.
Yeah, Astaghfirullahalalaa. Yeah, I, I was just talking about, uh, like I had to go out and, uh, check with the guys that's working outside for, for me. And, uh, I see the, uh, uh, it reflects on my grand, my great grandfather and my great, great grandfather and my father. And how they, uh, managed to produce, had the land produced for them. And, uh, secured, uh, a, 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 and to maintain a certain kind of work ethic. You know, especially, uh, you know, a lot of the, a lot of my, my great, my great aunt. They left the land, it was, uh, just like, I think Michael was talking about, most of them migrated up to north, to the north. And, uh, uh, found work there, but also found more than just work, but the, the, the fun life. And, uh, forgot about the hard work. They were only looking at the hard work and not, and, and having no, no return on their hard work. But, uh, the, the faith was kept so that maybe one day that my grandfather, and it's mine, I'm thinking. So there, there might be one day from my seed that someone will come back and pick up where I left off. And, uh, and, and it wasn't so much the men, it was the women. Who, uh, held on to the land, paid the taxes. Until some, some, until the male come, uh, someone would come along and, uh, uh, bring life back to where it was, uh, uh, productive. So that's the kind of, um, community or environment that, uh, I grew up into. And, uh, I taught my kids, all of them, I have five children. My daughters and my sons, uh, how they should get a house, how they should take care of it. I used to renovate, I, I took an old house and renovated it while they were looking at me. And teach, and showing them how to, uh, cut wood, how to lay brick, how to, these things. And, uh, uh, plumbing and everything so that they could do it and teach their children how that worth, that, that work ethic.
Yes.
And, uh, the can do, I can, and then when, when I came in the Nation of Islam, oh my goodness. That was just, uh, wonderful. We just, uh, we just did a lot and we were a very small, well, Masjid and, I mean, the temple in, in Washington DC. It was a very, we, we were, we were very productive, very productive. And we were not given over to the select and, uh, and the, uh, criminal element that, uh, was, uh, was, uh, ever, ever, uh, uh, inviting in the northeast, uh, and, and south, southern temples. There, there was a criminal element, you know, and, uh, had to be, and, and we never fell for it. And, uh, the, the, those who were under, uh, uh, in that temple number, temple number four. Uh, we never fell for that, uh, that kind of criminal mind. We were just trusting that ethic, eth- ethic. You know, so.
Alhamdulillah.
Things that you have to, that young men start looking at and need them, uh, and, and they, uh, they will, they will address, they will come to the, uh, the better part of the, uh, environment to, the work ethic. And also to, uh, want to see, uh, achievement. And when you see achievement, my goodness, that's just inspiring to the heavens.
So thank you, Professor, for sharing that. Michael has our time.
Uh, that's a good question, Imam. We've got ten minutes and Sister Imani, I- Imani has her hand up.
Yes, please share with us, Sister Imani.
Astaghfirullahalalaa.
Astaghfirullahalalaa.
So I just wanted to make a couple of quick comments. I've been taking in so much. I, um, have been on since Imam Sahir was on, uh, but toward the end. And, um, the, the comments of the about, um, technology, uh, for my comment coming to play here. Um, I was just listening as you were speaking about what you did in being the example, in setting the example for your own children. And also taking in all that you learned from your grandfather and from other males that were around you who corrected you and poured into you. But as someone who has taught at all grade levels. Um, there is, there is a a starvation of souls that we are living in as it relates to our children. Our children are starving for, uh, they are starving for attention, they are starving for love. They are starving for correction, they are starving for safety. They are starving, they are malnourished in terms of, um, in, in terms of education. Because even when we didn't have much. Um, we had the truth, we had education, we had a knowledge of ourselves and our history. That isn't even allowed to be taught in schools anymore, which is one of the reasons I'm no longer in the classroom. Um, I could not teach from, as they say, the master script. So what they call it, that we are to follow the lesson plan and to teach from the master script. And, and, uh, in good conscience, teach what I was being told. And, and uh, in good conscience, teach what I was being told to teach. When I know that what I was being told to teach was not the truth, it was not true history. And that coupled with the fact that most of my students were from the homes of single parent. Uh, families, a lot of times where the mother was working several jobs just to try to make it. I won't even say make ends meet, I will say to make it. We are living in. Absolutely challenging times, but, but certainly uh, different times. And yes, that same uh, desire may still be there in the hearts of those who are older. Uh, because we know, uh, I was a streetlight kid. Be home before, don't let the streetlights, my granny used to say, don't let the streetlights beat you home, and that was meant. And I was also raised by the community, you know, I couldn't go down the street and around the corner and cut a fool. And think that, but when I got back around to my granny's house, that she wasn't already gonna know. And I, I was being corrected there, and I was definitely gonna get some correction, correction when I got home. That really, a- almost in a sense does not exist because you, you can't talk to people's children. In the way that we were spoken to, and it was with love in the way that we were spoken to, because they wanna fight you. And we are fighting, uh, we are fighting a battle that. I sometimes, as I was listening, and this is not to, uh, this is not to speak negatively of anyone. But this is really coming from my heart. I feel like a lot of times, and myself included, we can talk about what we had. But I, I think we have to really be real on what it is that our children have or that they have not. Because they are, they, they don't even have, uh, they might not even have half the recipe or the. They might not even had a bowl of what we had. Our, our kids, our children are suffering, they are. And I guess as a recent revert to Islam. Uh, cuz I went from Christianity, uh, and then thirty years ago, Nation of Islam, back to Christianity. And you know, I'm, I'm, I have found my way to the truth. And that is where I am now. But at the same point in time. When I look out and think what um, I could give to my own children, what we each can give to our own children. But the children in the community, they still have to be our children. So the things that we are learning or the things that we know, we have to get those children. The children that are in those uh, homes with the single parent, uh, who uh, may have not really. Had the opportunity to get the education or, uh, uh, you know, that whatever challenges or difficulties that they're facing. We have to, as servants, we have to step up our game. We have to not only step up our game, open our hearts, open our mind. I work with uh, the unhoused. Uh, homeless community. I do a lot of work there. That is where my heart is. And we have, in the state of Indiana currently, where, where I am, we have over nineteen thousand students. Uh, in Indianapolis, just in this area alone, that are homeless, that are experiencing homelessness. These are types of things that affect uh, families, they affect children. So I guess my question is, you know, it's made a statement, but um, my question there would be, or my challenge to us would be. How are we gonna stand in the gap? And what are we really going to do as a, an extended community? Of Muslims, what are we going to do? When we see our children, we see our people. Uh, going by the wayside. And then the technology piece of it is, these kids. Uh, when I was teaching, a lot of them don't even know how to read a, a regular analog clock. You know, like the basic things that they should know, they don't know. And there's gonna come a point in time, let's say if something happens and they, they don't have their phone to look at, they don't have. You know, if they can't add or subtract basic numbers, how are we going to? Pour into our community in that way, I guess is the question that, I'll leave it at that. Thank you for the time.
Thank you so much for sharing that, Sister Imani. That's, that's very important. That's a challenge we should be ready to, really ready to answer. And yes, they're even banning phones. Yeah, so thank you. We, we'll circle back on this cuz we left some things off the table. We'll circle back next week and continue this discussion. But thanks so much for everyone's participation. And we pray that Allah inspire us to look at it and do something, do a little something. Whatever little we can do to improve the situation as our dear sister mentioned, we appreciate it so much. So Michael, take those minutes and uh, close.
We're gonna close out with a dua or supplication to Almighty God. Um, Sister Manero, you've got the admin in terms of uh, transitioning. But I'm, we'll make this dua. Allah, guide us among those you've guided, right? Save us among those you save. Bless us in whatever you give us and deliver us from the harm that you judge. You judge and none can judge against you, and those whom you befriend are not disgraced, Emmy. Thank you, everyone.
Thanks, everyone. Salam aleikum, peace and blessings. Sister Manero, are you there?
Okay, uh, Sister Martha, can you transition us? Um, get you into the whole seat.
I think I remember that our entrepreneurial man, was he gonna be absent this week, or is that correct?
I'm not sure. I'm not sure. I don't see him in the queue. So you may be correct. Okay, Sister Martha, Sister Martha Nala Williams Abdullah, are you there?
Yeah, I'm here, and I believe he will not be here.
Okay.
Greece line, uh, that, that we're meeting with uh, New Medina.
Okay.
This morning.
Should we continue? What, what do we do?
I don't know, yeah, until you see him, if he has arrives. Ahem de la la, so yes, sir.
Okay, so Imam Delacey, I'd like to make a few comments. Uh, what, what we haven't brought into the mix. And this is historical, you know, the, the books on uh, the Red Summer nineteen nineteen. African American men coming back from war and uh, being treated hostile. Because they were flexing their, their reality that they had earned the right. To establish the life, a healthy life and a productive life for, for their, themselves and their people. So there were riots. Uh, the history in general of establishing ourselves. And this is not, you know, you know, you, you have, you have folks that throw this thing back. And I understand why, because there are those that wanna use excuses. But the sojourn of the African American people has been very challenging in defining a place. You know, terror, you know, actual terroristic attacks that Caucasian writers have written about. The one hundred years of lynching. You know, this is not something that I'm making up. This is documented history and, and, and a fair, fair uh, expression of history. That the African American life from the beginning, when we were brought from Africa. Our people were brought from Africa and put into a dysfunctional way of, of living. In the, in the, in the very vital areas of our life. A Negro was never known in the annals of history until chattel slavery. And chattel slavery directed our energies to serve other peoples, to serve the masters' interests. This is a historical fact. And for, for hundreds of years, this type of socialization was put in us. It's, it, it, it's, it's a part of our genetics. The saving factor with that, Allah, Almighty God, has blessed us with individuals in this sojourn that were not. Yielding to the oppressive environment that, that was established. And God preserved them in terms of uh, having these, these strong men and women like Harry Tubman. And, and Frederick Douglass and, and sojourner truth. These women were preserved, these men and women were preserved to, to save us. From the, from the oppressive environment by modeling for us the kind of behavior. That Almighty God intended for us to, to, to have as human beings. Uh, it was a much worse, I mean, you know, people get upset about making comparisons. But when you have a people that are emptied out, that wasn't even done to the hu- Hebrew boys and girls, you know. And, and the previous scripture talks about, you know, will a man rob God? Well, we certainly saw that. With, with the African American people, a robbery, a robbery, not just a robbery of our physical selves. But a robbery, a robbery of our spirit, of our, of our intellect, you know, to, to serve other people's interests. And uh, so this is a challenge, you know.
Yes, sir.
Let me, my last comment, the idea that was introduced in terms of uh. In terms of uh, what, what's it called, feminism, Sharad Ali. She wrote a book and she was heavily challenged about her, her, her thinking that African American women. Being invited into this mindset of feminism, when we, that was not our issue, you know. You know, our, our, our men never oppressed our women. Uh, you know, in the way that the Caucasian European women were being oppressed by their men. And so she, she was saying how uh, we were tricked. And there's, there's certain issues that are sensitive, uh, sometimes I, I will enter into them. But women, you know, the, 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 the African American women need to address certain issues. And I, 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 I'll mention this one, this idea that I have ownership. I have ownership over my children, my children, not our children, but my children. My house, my refrigerator, you know, my couch. That issue needs to be addressed. There's something there that the women need to talk about in terms of these sensitivities. And I'll stop there.
Yeah. And I, you know, I, uh, when I brought this topic, I was, I was taking a look at the broad picture. Of uh, as our dear Sister Imani mentioned, uh, how the conditions are in the, in the broader society. How they affect our communities, the Muslim community as well. And what can be done about it, what can be done about it, how, so one, 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 uh. One thing was looking at the historic relationship between the Prophet, his wife, and how that started. And you know, and I, I was impressed about the, the language of the Quran, zauj, as a, as a partner. Zauj as a partner. And, and what was impressive about it, it was also used as a business partner. If you had a, if you had a business partner in the Arabic language, you would have the same language as you, as we use for me. Partners, partners. And I'm, you know, and I think, it's just my opinion, I know, I think when we approach the relationship. We don't, we don't approach it in this, as a, as a partner, as equal partners. And, and uh, one having the interest of the other one, and the other one have the interest of the other, both having the interest of each other. And uh, and building, building on that relationship from that perspective. Taking an interest in what your partner is doing and uh, how can you help? Taking it, in, in both ways, taking an interest in what the wife is doing. That we saw in the Prophet Muhammad, how he would, he would just be basically cleaning in the house. In the, in the home. At that time, women stayed in the home more than they were out in the public. So these type of uh, inter, interrelated actions and seeing the relationship different. You know, I, I think it's what could start what, what we were talking about, cuz once you have a team. Now you can move ahead. One is supporting the other and the other one is supporting the other. And uh, and one had, they were two people with different interests. Their interests are different. But still, that's a team. Then you can move further with that. You can go now and get another team. Uh, who share the same interest to address community problems. You could put it in a bigger picture now that you, that you've started to build the concept of teamwork. And when you see that happening, you have a better opportunity. So, the professor still with us, uh?
Uh, no, he, 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 he signed off. Uh, we've got Mohammed Sharif in, and Brother Bilal's hand up.
Yes. So let's bring him in.
Mohammed?
Yes, I knew I said I was gonna stop talking, but it's difficult to say.
That's okay.
Okay. Like I say, I, I put it this way, I have a. Age on most of you. I'm eighty-five.
Oh, wow.
Sure do.
And, and I have, I have.
Congratulations, thank you for your service.
Thank you.
Go ahead, Mohammed.
Yeah, and also I have a lot of experience that a lot of you probably don't have.
Yes, sir.
See, that's why I guess I said I'm gonna stop talking, but it's hard for me to stop talking. Because there are a lot of things that is missing in the conversation.
Yes.
You kinda breaking up on Mohammed, I'm not.
That's when I tell you what, we did not support Imam. Yeah, I'm, can, can, can you hear me now?
Yes, I can hear you. Go ahead.
Yes, I'm just saying, I get no response when I say that we did not support Imam Mohammed. He told us something else. He said, I'm gonna ask Allah to, to punish you. He said, a matter of fact, you already being punished, but I'm asking Allah to increase the punishment. If you downplay and don't give proper respect to my leadership. And we are getting it, and we are going to get more. I feel very confident to say that we are gonna get more punishment. For not asking Allah to forgive us and repent for not supporting Imam Mohammed.
Yes, sir.
Thank you again, assalam aleikum again.
Thank you, Mohammed, appreciate it. Bilal?
I'm the last, now, I'm, I'm gonna wait a little bit until I get a, something that I'm more comfortable with giving out. Salam aleikum.
And thank you for your last comment about purity, purity and, and good intentions. That's so important, such an important comment. We appreciate it very much. Uh, so Michael, you, you, would you care to share some thoughts on it?
Oh, yeah, this is a subject that uh, you know, we, we need. This kind of language environment and, and, and conversation focus. Uh, we, we, we've got to solve these problems.
Yes.
We need a researcher mindset and we need a strategic mindset. Because uh, li- li- like what I mentioned earlier, it's a very sensitive subject to uh. You know, the sensitivities of the woman have been affected by the, 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 the social. The, the, the socialization process and uh, how both men and women have been socialized. So there, there's something to this idea of, you know, my furniture. This is among the African American women. I don't, I don't think other women have this issue, but they may have it, I don't know. But I know in my own house, you know, growing up, you know, get off of my couch, you know, get off. But I know in my own house, you know, growing up, you know, get off of my couch, you know, get off of my furniture. You know, get, get out of my refrigerator.
Yes, sir.
When, when actually these things are used by the whole household.
Shared huge freedom spaces.
Shared spaces, yes. Yes, exactly. But so there's something there that needs to be addressed. And because of the sensitive nature of it, you know, the, we can't address it as men. I'm bringing it up to be looked at by, by, by our, 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 our resourceful women and our, our thought leading women, you know, to, 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 to probe this issue, you know? Because it may be affect, you know, it may affect other, other, you know, issues. Like for instance, you know, I mentioned, you know, that, and this is very sensitive. When, 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 when the older women back past nineteen sixty, sixty-five, let's say, the older women knew that they could not raise a man. They could not take a boy from boyhood to manhood. Older women knew that. So they look for, they look for suitable men within their family and outside of their family, maybe a coach, a, a, a sports coach or something, to model manhood for their, for their, their, their boys. But, but, but after that fact, after that situation, you know, this, my, this is my boy. This is my, this is, and you know, the burden of trying to be a mama and daddy was an impossible, mission impossible. You can't do it. Women can't do it, you know? They could, you know, they, they, they can have some success, but it's not in terms of overall success. No, it's not designed, it was designed for man and woman, husband and wife, to raise the children. The boys at a certain age, I've seen it. They get irritable after mother has taken them so far. When they come into puberty, they're ready to hear the man's voice, you know? And in fact, you know, so, but, but this is not acknowledged, you know? The roles that we have to play and be supportive of each other's roles. Uh, that kind of communication that you're, 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 you're leading us to right now in this conversation.
And you know, uh, yesterday I, I was, I had a talk with uh, a relative, uh, uh, female relative who had went to college, ran track and uh, working on, got a master's degree, et cetera, et cetera. And uh, she accredited, she accredited the success of uh, her, her success as a father who was relentless. Would not, would not uh, let her just have her way and not, not do her best. You know, and I, I thought that was very interesting in this conversation too, uh, in terms of the, even for the female child, that male figure in the home is so essential.
That's true.
So essential. And uh, and definitely for the, for the young men, it's, 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 it's definitely essential that we have that. But, but we are not dealing with the perfect situations here. We don't have.
No.
We don't have the ideal family and et cetera, et cetera. And I think what Sister Imani brought up was very important since we don't have that. So we have to have a, another strategy.
That's right.
For improving the lives of our young people in our community. And she's correct about they're, they're so correct. I mean, with the experience she has, I, I trust that for sure. But for certain, I've seen it myself. You know, I, I could walk up to, to the park, even with my eyesight difficulty. And the young men will come up and start asking me questions about this, questions about that. There is a, there is a vacuum in the, in the society and in the children aware of it. They know that they are not being trained properly. They don't have the right perspective. They know they are missing a lot for the future. And uh, and we definitely gonna have to do more in terms of uh, networking with these young people. Finding opportunities, finding opportunities to network with them. And especially, especially for us with the, with the new mind, the new information, the, the natural, the, the, the emphasis that Imam shared with us on, on nature, et cetera, et cetera, on, on natural development, on the universe. You know, I, I heard that language uh, earlier this morning. Uh, uh, the universe teaches, right?
That's right.
And so we, so we have, we have this whole universe to give us the tools we need. And the history is important when we, because most of our young people, they are not even aware of the historic uh, uh, journey, the historic journey. And now they are taking it, they're trying to wipe it out of the textbook for sure. You know, at least we had opportunities for African American studies and this and that. But this D E I situation now, they are just, they are sweeping the textbook. Matter of fact, in, in the, the state of Florida, some groups had gotten all of the textbooks that they banned. And was trying to get them distributed in our communities. You know, that, and I hope, and you know, some of them needed to be banned. I'm not against, I'm not against banning certain things. But, cause if they are not given to the proper age group, they can't process that type of information. But certainly the historic contributions should not be something that kept away from our children because it motivates them. Give them a sense of, 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 that they can accomplish these things too. Because they are aware, they are aware of the color discrepancies that are in, in the, in their environments, in the world.
Yes, yes.
Yes.
Two hands up, Amira and then Sister, um, Sister Amira and then Sister Manera.
Yes.
Assalamu alaikum.
Sister Amira first, because you've made several comments and she hasn't. That's why I'm doing this. Sister Amira, your hand is up.
Uh, Assalamu alaikum, can you hear me?
Yes, go ahead.
It's really, uh, it's really ironic that you are, uh, in discussing this particular topic. Because lately, you know, as you, as we uh, look over our lives and we, we come to age, maybe like, you know, senior life. We come to a time where we thinking, well, why do I have to keep struggling like this here? You know, and you, you be looking, you be looking for ways, a ways out, you know? And a lot of times uh, in our development, maybe we didn't, uh, our families, our family structure wasn't strong. Or a, a woman may not had a husband to help her raise her children. So there's gonna be something sometime missed in the development. So you'll find yourself, you know, in your senior years, still struggling though you were in your forties, you know? Not finding any answer and you get tired, you get really tired. And then you, when you do, uh, you might meet somebody and you think they're gonna be a good mate for you and that don't work out. And then you have to go back to the drawing board. It, it just becomes a constant struggle. And you ask Allah, oh Allah, when will relief come? Cause you don't want to give up. You don't really want to go. And but you run out of answers of how to manage and take care. Sometimes we haven't prepared ourselves in our earlier years, you know? But what's, what may have came upon us in our senior years and you just continuously, continuously, continuously seeking answers. So I'm listening for you brothers for some answers. I, I really am, you know, I really am. I've been in, I've been in, I've been in this being, uh, let's see, I'm seventy-two since I was six. And of course, I always, you know, coming under Nation of Islam. And we always thought that uh, by a certain time, because we were always giving, giving, giving financially efficient.
Yes.
We gonna be okay, we would have been okay by now, you know?
Oh no, it's not on our timetable.
I know, the struggle is just as hard now. It's just as hard now. And it's telling you, like I said, I'm, I'm, I'm just really still looking for some answers.
And the consolation is, is Allah tells them, uh, don't, don't think because you say you believe that you will not be tested. You'll be tested in your wealth and yours, in your health and all of these things. But give glad tidings to those who patiently persevere. You have to stay in there. You have to stay in.
Hold on, Sister.
Keep, and keep striving for excellence.
I'm trying, brothers, I'm trying.
I'm looking for excellence. Keep striving for excellence.
Sister Manera, come, welcome.
Thank you. I, I wanted to speak to the language of, um, that was being addressed earlier about, um, you know, get off my couch and things like that. Um, men did that as well. That was the language that, uh, 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 ancestors use. And uh, the methods that they use to take care of things that you didn't pay for. To take care of things that have been provided for you. Okay? So they're not gonna say, get off your couch. They said, get off my couch, cause they bought it. And the men did that too. Boy, close my refrigerator. Cause they bought the refrigerator and they put the food in it. You couldn't go in the refrigerator without permission. Close my refrigerator. Okay? Men did that. And men put, uh, 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 them out the house. Get out of my house. You can't live by my rules? Get out of my house. This was the language that our ancestors worked with at that time, the language that they had. But uh, intuitively, we know what they meant, you know? We knew it was ours. You know, I had a key to the house, so it was my house too. But I know what my mom meant when she said, get off my couch. Okay? Uh, so we can't be, we have better language now.
Yeah.
We have better language now. We understand the power of language and we use language better than our ancestors did. So we just want to take that into account.
Yes, thank you.
So Bilal, Bilal has his hand up.
Yes, Bilal, come in.
Assalamu alaikum, say because I, I, I wanna, uh, I wanna get out of the the past for, for a while. I wanna, I, I wanna get out of the, the hall of the spaceship. I wanna get out of the, the oppression that the white man has done, done us. I wanna get out of uh,
Thank you, Bilal. I could use.
I can't get along with my husband. Yeah, so what I, what I wanna, what, what I wanna do for us now is that let's build a model community, answer the invitation that God gave to send it to the other people. And build on the fact that we have taken over this covenant. And we're gonna carry it. We're gonna carry the govern, the covenant of God here in America to a savage people and establish a, a community inside of the United States. That will be a witness, that be a testimony before all of the nation of the world that a miraculous thing has been done by God in the United States. And I am telling you that our remodel, we have more power to convert the world to Islam than anything that they ever had gone for them, other than the Prophet himself and the best that follows that, at that time. That's, that's, that's what I build on. I don't, I don't, I don't build on nothing else but that. And so I want the knowledge to build on that. And we have a lot of that. If we stick to that, and then we'll continue to move in a different direction. You see, uh, my, uh, Rabbi is an architect, right? He not gonna put himself all the way back in school. He, he out there got people building things right now. And he directing them to do, doing it. He not gonna focus on way back in school before he even, even became an architect. You know, look, we out the moon now. Let's go ahead on and stuff, keep on building. You have a good understanding of what you're already doing right now on this program. A C W S C and AM three sixty, build on that. You already got it. You don't have to go all the way back. Keep going back. And, and where the woman did this and the man did that and, and all that, you know, you love her, you love him. Y'all work it out. And keep on pushing. If you love it, go that, when you wanted the dope, you got the dope, right? Put more energy in getting your, a good family life. Keeping your children together, but don't let your children make you miserable to the point that, that you don't, that you give up on them. You know, we have to talk a different language now. Look, don't be, don't be slow, like Imam, uh, don't be slow and following Imam. Like you, like uh, Mohammed should be saying, be just too slow and follow Imam. Pick up the pace.
Yes, sir. Thank you. You know, I, I, I need to add to that, that, you know, we have, we, everyone has some different interests, interests. But we all know that there's, it's one interest, but all of us can't do one thing. We need, we need that, we need that difference, different approaches. Cause if we, we can't all do one thing together. So we need to have a unified effort in doing good. And then when that, and this, this is how the Quran addresses it. So it's that you are the best community brought out for the good of humanity. You endure the right and you forbid the wrong. And then, uh, then Allah says to each, to each is a goal to which we have given you. So strive together as in a race towards all that is good. So we have to break these things up into achievable goals where we have someone working on this, someone working on that. And someone working on the other issues of importance. The Imam gave us four issues. Education, business, culture, and governance. That, that, that are, are specialties. All of them, all of them deserve special attention. So we have to have people in these areas looking at these things. And then we should have, we should have a time where we come together. And then put everything out that we've accomplished, who, whatever you did with governance. I've did such stuff. Whatever you did with culture, we did this. Whatever you did with business and economics, we did this. And whatever you did with education, we did this. And then education should be governing all of them. It was the number one priority. We should be educated in business, educated in culture. What is affecting our culture? How do we improve it? Educated in governance, how do we first govern our family? We do, right now, we talking about govern, governing relationships. And how they need to be, some attention need to be paid to that. And with education and with, with, with investigation, with contribution with, with uh, you know, with collective contribution and discussion, which we are having. Michael, please, yes.
And, and, and uh, the world of business and the world of science, they have, you know, re- recorded practices. And they've improved practices because they look for the better practices in, in medicine. A lot, a lot of uh, uh, lives were saved by the, the improvement of practices in medicine, like hygiene, you know, the washing of hands and the sterilization of this and the sterilization of that. The, the, the practices were improved because they were looking for better expression of, 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 of those, those, those uh, abilities. And so we need thinkers, uh, thought leaders, men and, and women that are, that, that are thinking in terms of uh, a knowledge mindset and not a fixed mindset where we're not letting the idea of excellence come into uh, our, 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 our conversation as well as our, 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 our efforts, you know? So, you know, and, and, and this is, this is trailblazing stuff that we're doing. And it's not, it's not for the faint of heart, you know? And God tells us that. He says, if the journey was short without, without difficulties, you'd have more people on the path. But the journey was meant to be. But the journey was meant to be difficult to show us that God don't make jump. God put resilience in us. God gave us the strength. You know, we can choose to be what the Imam called ripe tomatoes if we want to. But that's not what God want for us.
And I'd like to circle it back to finding your purpose, finding your purpose, to each is a goal to which Allah turns you.
Yeah.
You have to find your purpose. And uh then you have to operate within your purpose. You can't be all over the place. You could, if you want to focus, you gotta find something specifically that I can do and do it well.
Yes.
And then you can, then, once you get that done, I can come to you, uh, how did you get that did, did you share that with me? Et cetera, et cetera. Because now we have people who are specialized in certain areas. And we can go to each other to benefit from each other. And that's what Allah means when he says that he will bring you together. Wheresoever you are, Allah will bring you together. But you have to follow that pattern. You can't, you can't expect that everybody's gonna be, have the same mindset, the same thinking, the same abilities, the same. Uh intelligent approach to what they're doing. Each one of us have different capacities. And we have, you have to find your purpose, what you can do.
Yeah.
I'm doing mine right now. I'm doing.
And Sister Mira has her hand up.
Oh, uh, thank you all. Thank, thank you all for answering my question. You both. I I, those who have ears to hear, let them receive you. I I receive you. Thank you all for answering my question.
You gotta get in where you fit in.
And it's not for the faint heart. Thank you.
Alaykum as-salam. There's another saying of Prophet Muhammad, peace and blessings of Allah, in the recognition that the, 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 those that. Allah truly loves and there are those because of their behavior and 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 how they develop. Uh, and it's, I get the picture, to cut it, to cut it short, the picture of Joe, the excellent servant. Who is really tried to a point where, oh, Lord, where's the help? I'm not gonna curse you, Lord. You know, I know what you've done for me, but I don't understand why I'm going through all this, you know? And and there, these people are like signs on the highway of life. Uh, you disbelievers, you hypocrites, you don't have any excuse. Look what I did to my beloved servant, Yo- Joe, you know?
Yeah.
And so, you you know, we have, we have people like that that are severely tried. We see it in Prophet Muhammad. He was severely tried with laws.
Yeah.
Of ones, loss of life, loss of material, you know? But Allah, Allah favor him.
But give glad tidings to those who patiently persevere.
Yeah.
Say where they afflicted with hardship, for my Lord, I come to my Lord, I'm gonna return.
That's right.
Be resolute, be resolute.
It is.
Yeah.
I love that word. Alhamdulillah, thank you.
Yeah.
Yeah. This is a one, this is a wonderful way of life. It's not just religion. This is a way of living, a a way of behaving, a way of thinking that the Creator has prescribed. I've given you Al Islam as this way of life for you. This is, you know, I I I support other ways of uh expression. But this is what I want you to have. This, this is best practices for you.
Yeah, this is preferred, yeah. For this, when, when we get this message, and I'm I'm thankful that we are on YouTube and places like that where we could actually share this. With the public, because that's where, that's where the big picture lies. And certainly, we can start in our areas to make a contribution by working when we see a need, by helping out with that. Being neighborly, neighborly needs, you know, we talked about that a couple of weeks ago, Al Maun, being neighborly needs. Fulfilling neighborly needs. These things are so powerful in 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 sharing ideas and and concepts. Et cetera, and working with people. The Prophet said, you don't know a person until you work with them, uh eat with them or travel with them. And I tell you, traveling with them is really, will tell you a lot, you know? The traveling is a fitness, a very testing thing. Yes, sir. So Michael, just a thought, if you will, how, how are we looking? We are.
Eleven thirty eight. We've gone thirty eight minutes past our normal time.
So what we'll do, let's uh, this thirty eight, so we'll try, if we can make it to the top of the hour, we can shut it down. If you feel you need to go, we can, we can shut it down. But do we have any people in in the?
No hands, no hands are raised at this time. Uh, I'd just like to say, you know, going to the political circumstances that we're, we're faced with. Look at the time since the United States of America government has been established. And I was looking at the, 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 the timeline from the, the presenting of the idea. To its being ratified, to its being established as, as, as the rules, the published rules and spirit of the country. America has been challenged with an idea, the, 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 look, look at the sophistication of these founding leaders. They weren't living up to what they had on paper. They had slaves. They weren't considering the slave as being uh un- under God. Uh having inalienable rights. They were so far from that. Uh even if they, uh, even if they had that sensitivity, they weren't showing it. It wasn't being demonstrated. They weren't modeling what they were saying. But they, they established it, they published it as, as, as a, a, something to be desired. Something to be worked towards, you know? And this is important. That's the way things, when you publish things. And the Imam told us about that. We have to publish what we have. Because it 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 speaks for us long after we are gone. Once it's, and we see that in this Declaration of Independence and the Constitution of the United States. Uh, Frederick, Frederick Douglass talked about it, you know? If you could only, and and I'm paraphrasing, if you could only live up to what you, what you have published. You know, right now, you, you know, your behavior would shame a nation of savages. But that was very sophisticated language. The, 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 the general public of America were savage.
Yeah, they were very savage.
Most, most were savages. Now, there were a few, but those few were, 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 uh, what do you call it? Their, their mouths were taped because, you know, they were out of line with the regular thinking of the people. And they couldn't show, you know, they were punished if they showed uh a recognition of the black folks' humanity, you know?
Yeah.
And they, they were tarred and feathered, you know, many of them, you know? So they had to be quiet, even though they saw the common humanity. They, they saw the Declaration of Independence. In, in, in their own, in their own eyes, you know? But it it it's, it's a long road. It's not a, it's not a sprint, that's for sure.
Yeah. So two, two things out, Michael, we, we gonna shut it down, but I like to make two things I want to mention. Teamwork and and respecting differences, respecting differences. And respecting everyone to have a different opinion and the right to that opinion. If we, if we could do that, I think that would, that would be a long, that would go a long way in creating unity among us. If we could uh just learn to respect differences and uh everyone having the right to their opinion. And also, the thing most, most important is I beg for us, that we have to look at teamwork. We gotta really focus on working together, you know? And that's, that's from the relationship, as Bilal mentioned, the marriage relationship, the family relationship, the community relationship, business. All of those things, we gonna have to work harder to, to, to cooperate in those areas. And I think if we could do that, we'd be well situated for success.
I agree.
There's some final thought, Michael, to chime us out.
Well, I want to ask Sister Manera, are you there to, to administrate the uh, the, 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 the closing? Sister Manera?
What about Sister Nala?
Nala is here as well, I believe. Uh, just want to make sure we.
Assalamualaikum.
So you're there for the, this, are you in the, can we get you in the whole seat?
Uh, you can. And 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 this bring us to uh that, that togetherness, that unity. Uh, a, one of our interfaith persons, leaders said, um, that someone asked about the oneness and about one. Yes, oneness and unity, are they the same? And he gave this description that oneness already exists and unity requires uniting.
Yes.
Requires the action of doing so.
That's right.
So with that, alhamdulillah, uh with that, I I want to share uh a- actions that are going on. I believe um this is the, 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 the time period, Friday, Saturday, Sunday. Where Manera Habil Umar and Imam Tariq Abdul Mukman are in a particular session.
Yeah, this was the entrepreneurial session, but he said he was gonna not be here this week.
That's what I mean. This is why. That is, um, it is because of their uh operating together.
Okay.
I believe it's here.
Okay.
Let me share my screen if I may.
I see.
Um.
So what they had, they had another event, is that what you said?
They have, they have, uh, um, yes, they have coordinated an event together.
I see. So it's gonna be its own, it's on Zoom or what?
Uh, let's see here. Um, well, let me share this. This is how, uh, uh, working together. Imam Tariq Abdul Mukman has taken upon himself on their advertisement. Uh, to, on their regular weekly atti- and uh, advertisement, they have included. American Muslim three sixty and the Zoom information along with their weekly YouTube information and Facebook information.
Wonderful.
Uh, that's at, uh, and at the time of Juma and that every third week, I believe that he's, every third Friday that he's on for central time. Uh, and I want to share that he has biblical, I mean biblical. But it's great advertisement. And I'm saying from, because of our togetherness, because of our working together. And and incorporating ways and means. I was trying to look for their advertisement as well. Uh, this is another one. We have uh Imam Wali Ayub Bilal. Uh, the Al Maun is their not-for-profit that is Philadelphia. And we know we reach greater audiences as well. And just letting everyone know that Al Maun with a B Th. And that's Bilal Industries, Think Halal Industry, First Annual Food Giveaway, November thirtieth, Sunday, Mo- November thirtieth. That will be held in Philadelphia. Uh, the idea is that we're collaborating. That's the purpose I'm, I'm sharing this. Uh, and contact information is for Shari Bilal, his wife, two six seven three four zeros zero seven five six. Community is our community and our responsibility. I I want to uh just mention those two items. And I I apologize, I don't have the one from Khalida. I have it, but I don't remember where I placed it. But Khalida and Imam uh Tariq, yes, they're doing an entrepreneurial uh presentation. And I think Khalida is presenting it from the point of, of uh. Uh, I'm not sure, it's not on marriage, but it's on togetherness, human, human family, the human family.
Alhamdulillah.
Alhamdulillah, thank you so very much.
All over the place. That's wonderful.
Yes.
Thank you. Thank you, Sister Nala. So we're gonna let you uh chime us out and share this, shut us down if you would, please.
Shut you down.
And blessings, peace and blessings to all, everyone. And uh, thanks, thanks to our audience, listening audience. We really enjoyed the program. Thank you.
Thank you. We enjoyed it as well. Thank you. All right, everyone, later today, five P M. I apologize, Michael, you about to say something?
I was saying you, you'll be taking us out of the YouTube connection.
Okay, okay. Uh, want to let everyone know, you can return at five P M for Al Islam in Focus with Deprita Abdul Hadi, that's Eastern Standard Time. And and then at sev- six P M, six P M, we'll return for, we will connect for. Uh, C W S C National Town Hall, Straight to the Point. And Manera will be giving you a call, Insha Allah. Assalamualaikum, everyone.